Good evening, and welcome to this, the May 22 meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. I'll let the roll call show that all the members are present and accounted for with the exception of Councilmember Warner, who is excused. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. A question for the city attorney, was there any action taken in the concession that was reportable?
Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken.
Okay, very good, thank you. Moving on to Proclamations and Presentations, June is Safety Awareness Month, and I have a proclamation proclaiming as such, whereas the rate of accidental injuries and related deaths in the United States remains at unacceptable levels, and whereas the City of Livermore employees and residents deserve to live and work in communities that promote safe and healthy living, and whereas the Livermore City Council wishes to join the members of the National Safety Council and other organizations in their annual observance of June as National Safety Month, and whereas the City of Livermore supports national safety efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees through the formation of the Central Safety Committee, whereas the Central Safety Committee works to ensure the safety of all Livermore employees by providing training, outreach, education, and encouraging continual improvement in the workplace safety and health, and whereas employees of the City of Livermore, the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District, and Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District and their families are invited to the 22nd Annual Health and Safety Fair on Wednesday, June 7, 2017, hosted by the Risk Management Division of the City Attorney's Office, headed by Janet Hamilton, who will be receiving the proclamation. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims June 2017 as Safety Awareness Month and urges all citizens to help reduce accidents, injuries, and illnesses by practicing safe and healthy behaviors in all aspects of their lives. And just to ensure that they're trying to protect the mayor, they took the glass off of the proclamation so I couldn't hurt myself, so I do appreciate that. So...
(inaudible) Mayor, I just want to say thank you very much for the proclamation. Our city really does put a high value on safety. I want to congratulate Helen and Darren for the Water Division, who's had five years without a lost day from a work-related injury, and that's an incredible statistic, very good. I want to encourage everybody to bring their water bottles, their infused water bottles. We will have a water bottle, a water bar again at the Safety Fair on June 7, and our theme is "Wild About Safety, So Wear Your Safari Clothes." Look forward to seeing you on the 7th.
So Wednesday, June 7, and that is going to be at The Barn, correct?
Yes.
Great, very good. I'll look forward to that. Now, moving on to the, for the Historic Preservation Commission, our annual update, we have Jeff Casciely presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my honor as the Historic Preservation Commission Chair to present the annual report to the City Council for the HPC. The duties and responsibilities of the HPC are an informative but lengthy list, so I'd like to summarize the HPC mission to these items. We encourage public awareness of Livermore's heritage. We inventory and monitor existing historic resources, both man-made and natural. We provide advice to historic resource owners. We participate in the development of a cultural heritage element in the general plan. We encourage and cooperate with private cultural heritage groups, and we coordinate with the Planning Commission and advise the City Council to achieve all of these goals. We do these things primarily through a series of activities, including reviewing properties for historic significance, especially at times of transition for those properties. We advise on property modifications. We dedicate plaques to remind the public of the historic significance of certain sites and to generate pride in Livermore's heritage, and I know that in a few minutes we will do exactly that this evening. I'm looking forward to it. We work closely with the city historian to research and communicate the stories of Livermore's heritage. We execute this mission with passion, with experience, and with purpose. Sometimes buildings do require rehabilitation to serve new purposes into their second century. In this past year, HPC reviewed and advised on the modifications to our city's original jail so that it can survive to become an interior design studio. We gave advice and subsequent consent to modification of the old Riboli Winery so that it may become a new café. We gave advice and approval to a sensitive garage addition in our Trevano Historic District, a jewel in Livermore's inventory of historic resources. We've also been delighted to be part of the project that will become a Sunflower Hill development, where we have taken the Livermore Skanoni House, and it will become part of a new development, supporting the needs of special needs adults. They worked with us very closely to make sure that that house was kept historically accurate, as well as being made appropriate to their needs. In each case, we've been fortunate to be working with owners and tenants who appreciate the heritage of the building and who cooperated with the HPC in preserving the character-defining features while making the buildings practical for modern life. It's not our goal to be bureaucratically obstructionist. As owners of derelict or indistinct properties petitioned for modification or demolition permits, we approved with conditions that served to preserve other sites with the salvaged materials and honored the lost sites with plaques or photo documentation, so that even the absent buildings remain in our memories. The biggest project, though, is our Southern Pacific Depot. It's a project that has stretched over a decade of city planning. Southern Pacific stopped using our depot in the 1970s for either freight or passengers, and the tracks were moved away to create a new downtown space. From that time forward, the depot has struggled to find a purpose and patronage. It has lurched from restaurant to diner to encampment, never dreaming it would return to its original mission. Due to the work of your dedicated city staff, of private citizens, of the City Council, private organizations, and the HPC, the depot now stands poised to get a thorough restoration and again to serve the community as a train and transit hub next to the railroad right away. The highest honor we can pay our historic buildings is to use them in the way they were originally intended, and that's an honor the HPC intends to pay our historic Southern Pacific Depot. HPC hopes that as people learn about the heritage in every brick in Livermore, they learn to protect it, they want to be proud of it, they want to tell its story, and they feel pride in the association with the history of Livermore. I want to mention in closing that this is, one of our committee members has termed out, that's Susan McCann, she's served very well on HPC, and what that does is creates a vacancy, and so I encourage all who are interested to come out and talk and apply for the position. Thanks very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? You didn't mention the terrific work you guys are doing at Hagaman Farm.
Well, HPC has approved some things there as well. You're absolutely right. So HPC has been working also with Sunflower Hill there, and thank you for the opportunity to mention that. They've worked with the, getting a new greenhouse dedicated for them, so that'll be coming up soon.
Yeah, the great program that we have with the Livermore Community Service Day, where we had just...
That was an amazing amount of work done, and the community really kicked in. We love it.
Great, great work, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now to 2.03, this is the presentation of the Historic Preservation Plaques to property owners selected by the Historic Preservation Commission. As the President mentioned, I just happen to have a couple of plaques here. The Craftsman Bungalow circa 1915, built by Butcher William E. Heinz and wife Rose for Purchased in 1923 by Neinbergs, in 1937 by Camillo Croce, Vintner, and Brandy Purveyor of Croce Winery, later the Livermore Valley Winery, or the Livermore Winery, and has remained in the Croce family until 2007. This plaque is commemorated by the Historic Preservation Commission, May of 2017, and is Denise Lenz here? All right.
(inaudible)
Okay, and next we have the Thomas and Isabel Scott Home, which was built in 1894. The style is a local pioneer. This was the home to Thomas Scott, who was Livermore's first attorney, and Isabel Scott, Livermore's first female attorney. And they're from 1894 to 1903, and this is once again commemorated by the City of Livermore Historic Preservation Commission. Do we have Chris and Lindsay Gunther? Oh, there we go. Okay, the fun stuff, recognizing some of the heritage that we have here in Livermore. Moving on to the Citizens Forum, I've got two cards, Jim Mansour and Bruce Shore. Mr. Mansour. These are for items that are not on the agenda, and we ask that the speakers keep their comments to three minutes or less. The City Council can neither deliberate nor take action on any item brought up during the Citizens Forum.
Yes, sir.
Due to the Brown Act. Mr. Mansour.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Jim Mansour. I've been a Ruby Hill resident for 18-plus years, and I'm here to bring to your attention a Ruby Hill community sewer water collection issue.
This is on the agenda.
Not what I'm going to talk about.
Okay, all right.
I'm here this evening to solicit your support in righting a wrong, and to ask that you work with the Pleasanton City Council on providing a solution to the problem. The issue is that Ruby Hill residents are now paying double sewage water collection fees, one to Pleasanton and one to Livermore. The problem surfaced about 18 months ago, with the result being that Ruby Hill's sewage bills are significantly more than what all of other Pleasanton residents pay, or Livermore residents pay, based on last April's bill, about $35 and $22 respectively, based on a bimonthly billing cycle. The handouts that I provided to you further details the problem and provides some additional information. The first column represents what all other Pleasanton residents are paying on a bimonthly basis today. The second column represents what Ruby Hill residents were paying on a bimonthly basis prior to mid-2015. You see that the numbers are pretty close. The third column illustrates what the Ruby Hill rates were as of April 21st this year, where Pleasanton's collection fee was increased thanks to a Prop 218 ruling, and Livermore's fee was raised as well. And the fourth column illustrates Livermore's current cost and possible foreseeable increases. Last Tuesday evening, I presented to the, I made a presentation to the Pleasanton City Council where the same issues and information that I'm providing you all with today was discussed, and I was appreciative of their support and interest to help to solve it. Last Friday, I was copied on a letter being sent to this City Council containing a proposed to help address the issue, and I hope that the two City Councils are able to work together to help resolve it. And lastly, just a reminder, and I know I don't need to make necessarily the reminder, but the current 30-year sewage treatment agreement between Pleasanton and Livermore expire in 2023. It may seem like a long ways away, but it's not. And I just want to make sure that folks are talking. Thank you for your time, and are there any clarifying questions I can entertain?
Thank you, Mr. Mansour.
Thank you.
Bruce Shore.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, last week I was privileged to attend the graduation session of the latest Key to the City program. Since their start three years ago, these city-sponsored activities have given a broad spectrum of Livermore citizens, retirees, businesspeople, housewives, important insight into how our city operates and who our city servants are. I was invited because I'd been a participant three years ago in the first of the Key to the City programs. Tonight, I want to express my appreciation, not only to the City Council for continuing to support this valuable program, but to our city clerk, Susan Neer, for all of the work she does to make this program work so well. Thank you, Susan. One of the things I learned, along with others who took part in this detailed introduction to our city, is the effect of the Brown Act. This state regulation requires that all city governance has to be conducted in public, no longer behind closed doors of smoke-filled back rooms, and the public place where this has to occur is right here at the City Council meeting. Your discussions and our input and your decisions must all take place right here in full view. This council chamber is where there occurs the meeting of our elected government and the people of this community. It is where the work is done that lies at the very heart of the democratic process at the most basic level of our governance. During the months that I've been attending these meetings, sometimes using the three minutes that all of us are granted to speak of matters that concern us, I have seen how inadequate these facilities are for their purpose. This building, an assembly of temporary housing units put together some 30 years ago, cannot handle the sort of visual aids of the presentations that nowadays are expected to accompany reports. There's hardly room to accommodate the crowds of concerned citizens who often wish to hear and be heard, and the facility must serve many other city citizen meetings just beyond the two nights of a month that we have council meetings. Historic preservation has its place, but I hope that when you have the opportunity to act on the long-planned demolition of the now abandoned and unusable old library building, you will take steps to replace that with a community meeting center that will include an emergency operations center and a much-needed new City Council chamber, and will give our community the governance tools that it needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. I thought you were going to say Historic Preservation should look at this building, but I was kind of worried for a moment. It is 30 years old, but yeah. Okay, well, that's, I'm going to close the Citizens Forum, and moving on to this Consent Calendar, these are items typically of a routine nature and passed with a single motion. Do I have a motion for the Consent Calendar?
Move Approval.
Oh, you want to pull one?
Oh, you're pulling one.
Okay, okay, which item?
4.04.
Okay. Okay, so hang on a second here, this is 4.04, the residential case sets, okay, let's go ahead and pull that for discussion. Well, let's have a motion for 4.01, 2, and 3.
I'll move 4.01 through 4.03.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Coumber. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Passed unanimously. Okay, discussion on 4.04.
What's the point? I don't know, I mean, this is voluntary, right? 10%, and I guess my prediction is we have a drought a year or two, and we come back, and we now have another discussion amongst City Council about reinstalling the 10% voluntary measures, and so I don't see the point in repealing something that's completely voluntary. So can somebody help me out here?
So one of your, and we have staff, both Public Works Director Darren Greenwood and our Water Resources Manager are coming forward here, but one of the issues here is that one of the things done during a drought time is to reduce off of a baseline. In this particular year, we are likely to receive some of the highest percentage deliveries of our water that we have in the recent past.
Okay.
So one of the unfortunate penalties is if your baseline's not at the proper time, when the actual drought comes, the across-the-board cutbacks come from that baseline, which is to take your 2017 uses, and now we want essentially not only voluntary, but sometimes mandatory reductions off of that. The voluntary situation is essentially signaling that there is not adequate water to meet supplied needs, and that in this case, in this year, is not the case, and I'll let Helen...
Right, but I mean, and when we did have the cutback or the voluntary conservation, it was based on 2013, right?
It was, and during that time, there was not voluntary reductions going on during that year. The base year did not have voluntary reductions as a part of it.
So you're saying that if we don't, in 2017, if we don't have it, then it could, the base year could be 2017?
In some future drought, they will look back, usually one year before the drought, obviously, we're not sure when that will be, and we really do want actually people to pay attention to the voluntary ask. And by having it all the time, you get to where the fact where people ignore it. In other words, because the first set of regulations that would come out would be for a voluntary reduction, we would have already been there. So in this particular case, what the Council's practice has been previously is during times when we reach our full allocation or virtually our full allocation, and Zone 7 has no water restrictions or has no requirement of the retailers to reduce water consumption, and there's nothing coming from the state that we remove both voluntary and mandatory reductions.
Okay.
So basically, is this on?
And slide up, and there we go.
Okay. So basically, this, you could look at this as a formality.
That's the way I looked at it.
It's stage one, we have a water shortage contingency plan that we're required to adopt, and Council adopted that as part of adopting or approving the urban water management plan that water retailers or water suppliers are required to put together every five years. And so there are different stages in this water shortage contingency plan. So as the water supply situation in Tri-Valley was looking more positively, last June, Council rescinded mandatory cutbacks of stage two of the water shortage contingency plan and enacted stage one, and it was enacted at the 10% voluntary level because we were still under a state of drought emergency for the state of California. And at this point in time, what Council is being asked to do is repeal, or rescind, or whatever the word is, repeal the stage one, because we no longer need to have any of the stages of the water shortage contingency plan enacted, and so this is basically what we're asking Council to do. So we are still going to continue to ask our customers to use water wisely, don't waste water, we still consider water a precious resource, but it's a different kind of take versus we're in stage one of a water shortage, because as the governor acted on April 7, announcing that he is issuing an executive order ending the drought state of emergency because we've had a record wet year, the Department of Water Resources that manages a state water project where this Tri-Valley area, including Livermore, gets about 80% of our water supply, you know, they have also increased their allocation to the state water project contractors, so that we're getting 85% of our requests, or Zone 7 is our water wholesaler, and in addition, some of the other water contractors are getting 100% of allocations, which is the highest it's been in a lot of years, and so we're trying to convey the message that there's plenty of water, but at the same time, please don't waste water. So this is really, you know, you could look at it as a formality.
So what are, what are the measures that we're going to take to help people understand that we've repealed this, but we're just, we're still asking people to be mindful that we could just as easily go into a drought a year from now?
Yeah. The Water Resources Division does have an ongoing outreach program and messaging program on water conservation. All of the four Tri-Valley water retailers, plus the water wholesalers, Zone 7, have a work group that focuses specifically on water conservation messaging and programs. You know, they have different kinds of rebates, we focus on, you know, resources on the website, our water utility has a lot of materials that we give out to the public, we have showerheads, a number of things, that we're always at public fairs, the Public Works Open House this week, for example, the Wine Country Festival, we have schools program, so we continue to do outreach.
Okay, thanks. Okay, are there questions on 4.04? Do you have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Coumber.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by the Vice Mayor Spadovsky. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passed unanimously. Moving on to, let's see, 5.01, this is the hearing to determine if the rates requested by the Livermore sanitation comply with the approved rate methodology. So Judy Erlinson, Public Works Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, and members of the City Council. My name's Judy Erlinson, and I'm the City's Public Works Manager. The item before you tonight requests that the City Council consider the annual adjustment to Livermore sanitation rates for the upcoming rate year eight. The franchise agreement states that LSI proposes rates, and it's the City Council's responsibility to approve rates by determining if the proposed adjustment complies with the methodology as described in the franchise agreement. In most years, rates are adjusted using various indices. However, for the upcoming rate year eight, the City opted to call for a cost-based review. The purpose of a cost-based review is to comprehensively evaluate LSI's actual financial data and ensure that the Livermore community is receiving the best services for the lowest prices. In December 2016, LSI submitted the required rate adjustment application. After review of the application, staff is recommending a 3% overall adjustment be approved, consisting of three components: a required baseline adjustment, compensation for additional assets purchased, and an adjustment for container replacement. In any year, it's LSI's discretion to apply rate increases over all rates proportionally or to focus an increase on one type of customer or sector. This year, LSI is proposing to focus the increase on the smaller-sized residential garbage carts. If approved, rates for subscribers to the 20- and 32-gallon cart size will increase up to $3 per month. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the upcoming rate year eight rates effective July 1, 2017. Thank you for your consideration, and staff is available for any questions.
Questions for staff?
Yes, so they've been, let's see, if I understand it correctly, over the last several years, you've been doing index-based, and now they want to switch to cost-based? We want to switch to cost-based?
Well, for this year only.
Oh, just this one year?
Yes, it had been indexed up based on their original, their proposal, you know, seven years ago.
So how have the actual costs been compared to the index-based method that you've been using?
Very close, bottom line, very close.
Bottom line, very close.
Okay. I also didn't understand, they talked about an additional route, and unforeseen labor costs? What was, what's that about?
So, in some cases, additional trucks were purchased to expand services that were not part of their original proposal. So in other words, they've provided additional services that they haven't been compensated for over the years, and now they're asking to be compensated for that going forward. So there's an additional truck, additional person to staff the truck, there's overhead, there's, you know, operational costs associated with that.
Okay. It also seemed like, I mean, they have the, I mean, one comparison was 835 pickups a year, when the actual total's 5,200. I'm just surprised they're so far off.
Well, that particular service is a very popular service.
Apparently.
Yeah. That would be the three-on-call pickups per.
No, I know what it is, right? I'm just shocked, so out of whack, in terms of the estimate versus what actually happened.
Yeah, so originally, the numbers were based on a different provider's information, which turned out to be a little bit wrong. And so, they've met their, the services they agreed to provide in the contract, and again, now they're just asking to be compensated and able to better serve the residents of Livermore by providing the service in a more timely manner. You can imagine there's been some delays, customers haven't already, always had the five-day turnaround that's required in the contract, because of.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, so they're, they're trying to, to meet that requirement.
Okay.
Just another, just a quick comment, and something that I've learned now in the two and a half years or so I've been up here is just, and also driving around my neighborhood, people are going to the smaller and smaller cans, and they are throwing more and more into that recycle bin that does not belong in the recycle bin. So people have reduced their, their can sizes to save some money, and then it increases our costs in the recycling, and we just had, what, a year ago, a cost to our recycle program because of the working conditions and some of the things that they're having to deal with. So it's, it's always something in particular when we're facing other increases, that is, you know, not in particular, you know, nobody's going to come up here and cheer an increase, but it's just, you know, the necessary cost of, of removing trash until people change their behaviors. One of the quotes, I think it was Darren, that said, "If we really wanted to reduce costs, we could just stop recycling," because that's what's costing a lot, but no one really wants to do that. So, thank you for, for working on this.
Well, in that regard, I was walking through my neighborhood, and in the green waste container, and I was telling Ms. Erlinson about this, in the green waste container was a, an aluminum pole for a patio umbrella, and the patio umbrella was included. And I mentioned to her, and without batting an eyelid, she says, "Yard waste." That's right. It was an aluminum pole in the patio umbrella, yard waste. Yeah, so, but you're right, you've got, they misallocate the resources, but a lot of people are going to the, the smaller container, that's what we've gone to, and in a typical week, I don't fill that up a third full, because everything else goes into the green waste and the, and the recycling. So it's, it's not that difficult to do, just a, just a small amount of effort makes a tremendous difference.
Check his recycle bin, maybe, you know.
Yeah, I was, it's good to see that we held the line to 3% rather than, as LSI asked for a 9.29% increase here. And I was wondering, with the pressure on development and building here, will there be more pressure in upcoming years, just from LSI, to increase that next year, the year after? What do you think?
Well, I would anticipate, given more development, particularly the high-density development, there is going to be more costs involved with serving these types of developments. So I would say yes, I would expect costs in the future to be addressed.
So perhaps part of new development should be to be, make them accessible to a garbage truck? That would be probably a good plan, huh?
And sometimes with the developments, we've, you know, they have to bring their garbage cans to a common location, it's not, you know, the luxury that some of us have is just dropping it right off on the curb, they have to walk down the street, have like a common area. So hopefully, that'll save a little bit of money, one location.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Do we have any cards for this? No cards? Okay, very good. Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the rate methodology?
I'll move to accept the rate methodology.
Moved by Councilmember Carling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Coumber. Any discussion on the motion to accept the rate methodology for the solid waste rates? No? No discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Erlinson. Moving on to a public hearing, considering adjustments to the sewer service and use charges for the Sewer Enterprise Fund. That's the first reading of an ordinance. Mr. Greenwood.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Darren Greenwood, your Public Works Director. Joining me is Habib Isaac from Raftellus Financial Consultants, who did our cost-of-service study. And we're going to tag-team here a little bit, so I'll get us started. Some of the items we're going to cover tonight, a little background and history on sewer rates, then Mr. Isaac will provide a review of the cost-of-service study. We'll finish up with just a couple items on sewage control fees and minor ordinance changes that are needed to implement, and, and then talk about notification adoption, and then we'll go to the recommendations. A little background on sewer service charges, the wastewater treatment plan and collection system is operated as a municipal enterprise, so no general fund or property tax support. All of our operations and maintenance expenses and renewal replacement are all funded by user, user fees and charges. To give you an idea of the complexity of the system, we track, the staff tracks about 80,000 system assets, including about 300 miles of sewer lines, with 2016 replacement cost of about $670 million. The city has not followed a pattern of regular increases in the past, and has gone for long periods without a sewer charge increase. Between 2004 and 2016, there were only four increases in sewer charges, which led to larger, larger increases at each time. Despite these larger increases, sewer charges have increased more slowly than inflation. Some of the comment letters and comments on social media have mentioned that the increase is larger than inflation. Actually, over time, the rates have increased slower than inflation, and there's a little graph I can show you. So basically, the blue line is what would have happened had the city increased its rates in, in line with the Consumer Price Index as those rates increase. Instead, the green line below is the actual increases, you know, just a couple increases over the 15 years or so. Because of these slower increases, even though they were larger, individual residential customers have saved about $725 between 2004 and 2017 versus the rates had we adjusted them based on inflation. The proposed rates for the next three years do, 2018 is still lower than inflation rate, but in 2019 and 2020, the rates will finally outpace an inflation-based rate. And in those two years, residents would pay a total of about $52 more than inflation, bringing the savings over about 15 years to $675. Some of the regulatory requirements, US EPA in the Code of Federal Regulations, easy for me to say, requires that wastewater utilities review their charges periodically to make sure that they have adequate resources to treat the wastewater, protect the environment and public health. In addition, in California, wastewater utilities are required, because of Prop 218, or approved Prop 218, to make sure that the total amount of sewer revenue collected doesn't exceed the cost of providing the service, and that the cost to any, any group of customers is no more than the proportional cost of providing the service to those customers. In addition to the recommendations we're making tonight on rates, staff is recommending that council direct staff to pursue a policy of regular annual sewer charge increases with a goal of offsetting depreciation of the system, and achieving and maintaining rate increases that are comparable with inflation, instead of, you know, to avoid rate spikes like we've had. In April 2017, or actually before that, city hired Raftellus Financial Consultants to prepare a cost-of-service study that was completed in April 17, and Mr. Isaac will give a review of the cost-of-service study.
Thank you, Darren. Mayor Marchand and City Council members, staff and the public. As Darren mentioned, Habib Isaac with Raftellus. I'm going to go through your current financials, that's one thing we always do when we take a rate study. We want to look at where your current revenue is today, not just by looking at your budget, but we also look at your billing records, and then we recalculate revenue based on your rates, to make sure that the amount of revenue you're generating is in line with what the budget number is. So right away, it's a real quick QAQC that we do, to make sure we're starting with a good baseline. And then where you want to be, where you want to be in terms of your financial plan, looks at to not only your operational costs, but also your reserve policies and your capital expenses. And then, once we know the amount of revenue requirements that we need, then we look at how we're going to recover that cost. So it's a good time to recalibrate and see what the usage patterns are, the flow characteristics of your customers. And then that generates your, your proposed new rates. Now, in terms of the financial plans and the key assumptions, we are looking at no growth right now, because we don't want to have to rely on growth to occur for you to be able to meet your revenue requirements. So, to give a more financial planning, being very conservative there, if growth does happen, then you, you would also have additional costs, but it usually is going to be somewhere around one to one. Also, we looked at your fund balances, your operating reserve is at 5.7 million, and your capital R&amp;R is at 20 million. Now, $20 million is, is a very nice dollar amount to have, but you also have around $32 million of capital improvements coming online in the next few years. So I would anticipate the city's done a really good job staffing-wise to build your reserves to be able to meet your capital improvements. And then your reserve targets for, part of your reserve policies is to have enough funds on hand for liquid, liquid cash for your day-to-day operations, which is 120 days. You also want to make sure that you have adequate revenues in your fund balance to fund your capital for the year. So typically, what you want to have is at least one year's worth of capital, so then you're not waiting for revenues to come in to go through your capital plan for that year. Another important thing is, a lot of times, you want to make sure you have that revenue in place to even award contracts to move forward. And city's meeting with those reserve requirements. So looking at those requirements and your current rates, you achieve positive net income above your operating this, any of this fiscal year. And then the next year, you'll have a very small deficit, nothing to be too alarmed about. But as we look at now also funding your capital projects, again, with no additional revenue coming in, just your current rates, your capital projects that are planned, which is basically reinvestment in your system, is going to use up all the, all those reserves you have available. And then with that, your reserves will deplete in, in just a few years, without any type of adjustment. So that's basically what we're looking at, making sure we're doing moving forward. So this is your total revenues, and this is at your current rates, which is just over $18 million. Here are your operating expenses, and then you'll see you have a black revenue number, which is positive income, and then you slightly go negative at your current rates. So what we want to do is make sure that the way you are today with the end of this fiscal year is maintained moving forward. Another thing I want to point out, this is the same, same type of information, but just in a bar graph instead of numbers. So the bars represent your different expenses over each year, and then the orange trend line going across is your current revenues. And again, it shows that your, your revenues don't exceed those bars, and that's where we want to be. You're very, right now, you have, you're a very strong financial position, but with Prop 218, you have to do this periodically every five years. So you always have to come forward and then see where you are, and then what are your adjustments for the next five years? It's just part of the formality in the process that you have to accommodate with the Prop 218 requirements. Besides that operating cost, you also have your capital. And one thing we're proposing right now in, in the report is just three years of rates. Our planning horizon is, is around 10 years, but you're only looking at three years of rates, which is really covering these planned capital improvements. For future years, we're looking at a portion of your, of your asset management plan, which was just adopted in, in the recent, recent months. And you definitely have a lot of reinvestment to do in your, in your infrastructure. And then with reserves, as I mentioned before, you're meeting reserve requirements, and then your red trend line here is your reserve target of the reserves that you have in place. And again, without any additional revenue, then your capital projects that you need to fund is going to deplete those reserves. So what we recommend is a few items. One, we want to make sure that we have positive net income over operating every year, similar to this fiscal year, we want to keep that moving forward. We want to maintain healthy reserves, so you have, you're over your minimum, we want to maintain that minimum. And then we also want to make sure that we have sufficient funding to reinvest in your infrastructure, because a lot of your capital improvements are coming to its, the end of its useful life. So with the proposed pro forma, we then see that we have positive net income above your operating. And if I look at your operating financial plan graph, you now see that you have these red bars above your operating costs, which is basically going to be able to fund your capital expenses. And now, after funding your capital expenses that are planned, this is now your reserve balance, which is both operating reserve and your capital reserve combined. You'll notice that's, there's a little dip, but that's okay. When you see a dip like that and it recovers, it's just that for that particular year, you had a spike in your capital improvements they needed to do. So that's where you do leverage your reserves to mitigate rate increases, knowing that it'll, it would recover in a couple years. So once we know the revenue requirements that we need, where we want to be financially, we then need to determine how are we going to recover those, those revenues. So this is a good time where we then look at recalibrating the rates, and look at how customers are impacting your wastewater treatment plant. And what this is reflecting that your different customer types have different type of affluent that goes to your treatment plant, and with different concentrations that you have to treat. So that's taken into account. And then we also look at how much of your revenue, or how much of your costs can recover through a fixed charge, or, and how much is based on the amount of flow that is generated to the treatment plant. So we allocate those components, and 40% of your expenses will be recovered through a monthly charge, and then 60% is based on the contribution to your treatment plant by the different customers. I'm not going to be, I don't want to go over these numbers here, but what this is, is basically the characteristics of all your customer classes, and number of accounts, what's the strength factors of their, of their flow, and the total flow that they produce in a, on an annual basis. So basically, this, this is used for what type of costs we're trying to recover, and what's going to be the, the way we recover that cost. So when we look at the fixed costs, what we do is look at the number of bills over the year, to come up with the rate per bill. So basically, each account gets charged a base fee for having an account. And then there is another component that you've had existing that's going to continue, which is a single-family lateral component. I believe there's around 67 accounts, right around there, that has the lateral charge?
All single family.
Or all single-family? Okay. It's a dollar and five, and that's not really changing. And then the variable component, this shows you the flow characteristics, where we show the amount that goes to the treatment plant, and then we have the strength factors to come up with the rates that are charged to your customer classes. And then with the 17, 18 proposed rates, what we see here is residential has the account charge, they have, the single family has the fixed lateral charge, and then they have the flow component where it's a, it's a, you look at a, a, a ongoing rate every single month for the amount of flow that's being contributed from your residential customers. And usually, it's pretty, pretty even throughout the year, to come up with the new monthly charge of $50.14. Multi-family condominiums, the only difference is that their flow, the amount they contribute to the plant is a little bit less, because those units usually are smaller, some don't have laundry within their facility, they go out for those, for that type of service. So that's why their flow component's a little bit less. And then all the commercial customers are recalibrated, and their rates are really close to where they are today. So that'll turn back to Darren to round out the PowerPoint presentation.
Thanks, Habib. Okay, so just to summarize, we're proposing a three-year financial program. Again, that's to give staff time to look at those out-year expenditures for capital improvements, and make sure that those projects need to be done, that they need to be done at the time that they're proposed, before we start collecting rate money for those. So we're being a little conservative there to try and keep rates a little bit lower. The results of the, of the cost-of-service analysis, about a 9% increase in annual revenue across the board. That translates for single-family residential to between 9 and 11%, the first year's 11% to. to take account for, as Habib said, rebalancing the flows and things like that. So for single-family residential, the, the net change is about $5 a month. For multi-family, as noted in the staff report, because those users, our current rates don't recover enough revenue for multi-family. As Habib said, the fixed charge is about the same and there's just a little bit difference on flow. So those rates need to come up for equity. So for the, the first year, that's a $10 increase for multi-family and after that, it's about $3.50. The financial outcome of all this is basically revenue will increase from 18.3 million in 2017 to 23.4 million by the end of 2020. It will fully fund replacement reserves as well as the capital improvement projects. And just to point out, as noted in the presentation, there still is a, a large amount of fund balance that's going to be used for this. So the starting fund balance is about 26 million. We take that down to about 7 million after the end of the first three years. So we're not collecting rates to cover all the CIP program costs. A lot of that is funded by accumulated savings or funds in, in reserves. Quick note on the source control program. This is a federally mandated program where we go out and look at what businesses are just discharging to the sewer that could impact the treatment plant. There is a requirement this program be self-funded, so basically it charges its own separate fees. Those fees are not property-related and subject to Prop 218, so they're not included in the notice. The, the rates for source control are sufficient right now with only moderate inflationary type adjustments. So staff's proposing a 2.4% increase each year for the next three years, which represents the past three-year CPI increase. We also need to make some ordinance changes to do some cleanup of the code because it hasn't been changed in a long time. Things we would be doing is, right now, the commercial category has a minimum requirement that that fee can't be any more than the residential fee, which doesn't match Prop 218. And we need to also change to allow the fixed charge for commercial as well. So we'll do ordinance cleanup at the same time. Notification provisions, sewer and water increases are subject to the majority protest provisions of Prop 218. So 45 days before tonight's hearing, we had to send out a notice. Staff mailed about 30,000 notices in April 2017. Before, when the staff report was done, we received about 300 protest letters. Since that time, we've received about 150 more that are included as a supplemental in your packet. The majority protest provision would be basically half plus one. So we would need about 15,000 back voting no to have, to have a majority protest. So unless a lot come in during the meeting, a majority protest does not exist. In addition, government code section 40, 5471 requires that sewer charges be adopted by ordinance and not resolution and that that ordinance be passed by a two-thirds majority. So with that, the very lengthy staff recommendation, I will read it because it's a lot of steps, is staff recommends that council open a public hearing to take comments on the proposed three-year adjustments to sewer service charges. That council also determined that a majority protest to increase sewer service charges does not exist at the conclusion of the public hearing. Three, introduce by first reading and ordinance amending chapter 13.36 sewer service and use charges. Introduce by first reading and ordinance amending sewer service charges effective July 2017 and direct staff to pursue a policy of regular annual sewer charge increases in the future with a goal of offsetting depreciation and achieving and maintaining rate increases comparable with inflation as measured by the Consumer Price Amendment. And that completes my report and staff is available for questions. Okay, thank you very much. Questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. You noted it was four increases in 13 years. Looking at the staff report, it looks like a period from 2003 to 2014. So 11 years, we raised it $2 during that period. Do we have data that stretches back prior to 2003? And roughly, what were the increases?
A similar amount. There was, the, the table provided in the staff report through 2004 or 5, the year immediately before that, there was additional increase of about the same percentage. Before that, there was a gap of probably four years or more before.
So around a 15-year period of about a $4 increase total in 15 years, total.
Correct, very, very moderate.
Okay. The other question that I had is, in, in general, I don't want to get, you know, extremely detailed about this, but the projects proposed in the CIP and the projects for the plant, they are critically needed projects. These are not projects that we just had on a wish list. You know, many of the, the letters, I think I counted about 171 received prior to this evening. And then we received some supplemental letters and I read through every single one of them. And there were some people that were questioning the need for some of the projects. One of them, you know, the questioning the need for odor control. And maybe they, they live in my neck of the woods where, you know, the odors are coming off the Altamont landfill, not, not the, the treatment plant. But some people didn't agree with spending money on odor control. Others, the reclamation, you know, for the energy generation off the, the burn off the stack that you see there at night. It looks like you can toast marshmallows around it, but I don't, I don't think you want to. But projects like that, so those are, in, in your opinion, they're critically needed for whatever reason, either failing existing infrastructure or required projects due to either regulations or technology changes.
Yes, everything in the CIP right now is, is pretty critically needed. As a matter of fact, in the budget this year, we've asked for an additional CIP engineer funded by, out of reserve funds, basically, to do the projects more quickly. Because over time, one of the reasons we have a surplus is we haven't been able to have enough staff time of engineering time to complete all the projects. Several of them on the list are critically needed. We have several things that have been leaking for a while. It's not an immediate, you know, danger of failing, but these projects need to be done now. So there's a whole nother list of things that could be done, nice to haves, that have not made the list right now. And you mentioned Cogen. That slipped below the line of projects this year that can be done, just, just with available staff and funding.
So within this first three-year period, you've already evaluated the need for other projects. There's no surprises. It's, we're going to, the rate increase will pay for X, Y, and Z projects. But the, the future projects, I, I hope we will be going out and making sure that we're assessing them to, to determine that they're critically needed, even though they may be at their useful life expectancy. That the longer we can stretch out of facilities and buildings, we're, we're going to do that if they're performing, you know, as designed and not leaking or hazardous. So i- in the future, there is a chance that some of those future, going through the CIP before tonight, there are, there are some major future projects. You know, either dependent on, hey, here's the expected life and we're expecting it to fail here. But if it doesn't fail, then we don't need possibly as much of an increase as we're projecting. Or this is a future project, you know, based on potential for the state to adopt new requirements. Should those requirements not be adopted, we're not going to complete these projects. So it, right now, the CIP is a little bit of a, not a worst-case scenario, but it's, it's kind of sort of, I don't know if it's, if, if you could call it a worst-case scenario in terms of if the state, you know, approves this and if this fails and if that fails, then they all come together at a certain time.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, basically, what we're looking, the graph I put back up. For the first three years, there, those are real identified projects that we know need to be done on our plan. The, the ones beyond there are placeholder. And the reason for that is, just as you suggested, we want to make sure before we start putting those, those CIP for the out-years into rates and start collecting money for them, that they need to occur. We're at the point right now of switching over from staff knowledge and master plan type things to identify projects to our asset management program. So it's spitting out a bunch of data that says these assets are going to fail. Before we program those and start collecting money for it, we'll do a condition assessment step where staff goes out and verifies that, yeah, it looks like it is going to fail when it's supposed to. And then we'll, we'll program it and replace it. If we find that useful lives can be adjusted, the pipes lasting longer than we thought, we would gladly adjust those in the model and it would spit out lower numbers. So that's why we're only asked for three years, because we want to make sure that we're not putting things in there until we know they're absolutely needed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Questions, a customer carling?
Yeah, so on your slide on proposed charges and fiscal impact, you talked about for a single-family resident, a $5 per month increase. But that's $5 the first year, another $5 the second year, and another $5 the third year. Okay.
I had largely the same questions as Councilmember Vice Mayor Spodowski, thinking along those lines. But do we have any programs to support people on a fixed income where costs are, continue to go up and income is fairly static, you know, as in social security otherwise? What can we do to assist?
Yeah, unfortunately, Prop 218 prohibits you from having like, most people are most familiar with the lifeline rate from PG&E. PG can do that because they're regulated by the PUC and not Prop 218. So Prop 218 requires charging the cost of the actual service. So a couple of options. There is a move afoot this year, I think, to try and get an exemption for low-income things added into 218. If that were to happen, the city then could establish a lifeline rate or a low-income rate. The only other way to do that would be to subsidize from the general fund and make it up from non-s sewer or water rates. So unfortunately, our hands are kind of tied.
Well, yeah, it's, it's one of those questions you hate to, you just, you know, somebody's got to make a decision here, but it's, it's, it's a tough one, you know? I think of those people, so many on fixed incomes, that every increase is something that takes from something else. Yet, the infrastructure is, in some cases, quite literally crumbly. Not necessarily crumbling, but crumbly. It's got to that stage. So we need to do something about it to fix it. So, thank you.
And that's a common question that comes up for water, wastewater throughout the state, is those lifeline rates. But right now, with Prop 18, the way it states is that no other customer could subsidize another customer. So if you reduce someone's rates, then other rates have to go up if it's, if it's funded within the same enterprise. So that's why the only option is the general fund, unfortunately.
And 218 was passed by the voters of California. So this is, this is something that, that we did. It was something that was, that was kind of done to us. But this was something that they believe would make the rates more fair. And this is, this is ultimately the goal of 218, is to ensure that everybody pays their fair share.
Correct. It was adopted in 1996 by the elected voter voters.
Right, and this, people refer to this as a tax. This isn't a tax. This is the, this is a water enterprise or a sewer enterprise, which means that, is the general fund making any money off of this?
No, it's not allowed to.
Right, so this is what it actually costs to operate the enterprise. So it's not, we're not, we're not siphoning money off into the general fund to do fun things because we don't do fun things. We just provide services. It's what we do. Some, some of the letters commented that, well, gee, I, I, there's only two people in my household and somebody with eight people in their household, they should pay more because there's more people. But really, the, the real cost here is the infrastructure cost. It's not so much the treatment that we're talking about here. We're trying to build up the, the capital to replace the infrastructure. That's the main cost. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And also some of the letters, and I read all the letters too, they talked about, well, the reason we're bringing, you have to raise these rates is because all of these new houses and new condos are coming in. So all the increased treatment, this is why we're having to raise the rates. However, all the new, if, new houses that are going in, that's new infrastructure. What this rate increase is to cover is the cost of the aging infrastructure, which has been used by the people here for the last 20 or 30 years. That's the stuff that has to be replaced. The new infrastructure is, is still, has a significant lifespan. But on the other hand, the, the, the cost of treatment is not, that's not the main component of this. It's actually the, the infrastructure cost.
Yeah, as you correctly point out, development fully pays its own way. So connection fees and fees on development do all, you know, pay for all the construction of new lines and things like that. Staff works very hard to segregate costs. So if we have a project that is, goes both for existing customers and new customers, we split those costs out so that there's no subsidy between, you know, connection fees and sewer rates. The other thing to point out is, a larger number of customers, on that you notice, part of the cost is fixed. The more customers, the spread your fixed cost, or actually reduces the cost a little bit. So in that regard, growth actually reduces your charge a little bit, doesn't drive them higher typically.
So you're saying the work that we had that would drive down the cost because of the economy of scale?
Yes, right.
And, and that's another thing that wasn't, in the, in the letters. People say, well, why don't you charge a huge upfront cost to, to the new development? And we do. There is a significant connection fee that is charged to, to all new development. Okay, plus the infrastructure.
And one component to that is, part of the connection fee law is that you're not, you, you cannot charge for existing deficiencies in your system. So repair and replacement, that's not, is not allowed to be charged on the connection fee.
And it's, some folks will, as the vice mayor pointed out, we can't just run this to failure. Some folks have suggested, well, do a bond. Well, you still have to pay for the bond somewhere, you know? And, and the bond typically doubles the cost, but it's, it's over time. So it may be cheaper as you go along, but it increases the costs, the ultimate cost in the long run because of the bonding costs, the interest costs.
Yeah, that's correct. That's more policy of what you want to do. And a lot of times, it's dictated by what improvements are going to be funded. And if it's going to span, you know, it's a new expansion of the treatment plant that's going to span 30, 40 years, then that might be a reason why you would consider issuing a bond.
But you wouldn't do that for a pipeline?
Yeah, you typically wouldn't do that for a pipeline.
Yeah, and as, you don't want to run these things to failure. That's why we have the asset management program going in place right now, is to find the actual, the optimal lifespan for these assets so that we have the money in place, so when they do fail, well, they don't fail. We, we can replace them before they run to failure. Okay, with that, any other questions, comments at this point? I'll open the public hearing. Do we have cards? Oh, there we go. Okay, I have four cards. Russ Greenlaw, Anthony Godrich, Ken Bradley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Russ Greenlaw. I live on Mars. That's the street, not the planet. Lived there for over 40 years now. I've seen the sewer fee or tax go up rather markedly in the 80s and then it was mostly level. And it went up slightly a couple of years ago. And now you have a very steep increase, which I believe is not justified. Your consultants, and pardon me, I didn't catch his name because as I lose hair off my head, I'm losing hearing out of my ears at the same time. But your consultant showed that even though previous rate increases were less than inflation, the city managed to have an operating surplus and a capital account surplus. That tells me that increasing rates more than inflation is not justified. You have in the past gotten by with a less-than-inflation increase and you don't need to go double and triple inflation in order to make up for that the way the, the curve did. Second point, I have five points. I hope that I get to them all before you hit the buzzer. You've been running into surplus besides inflation. The revenue has actually increased, is actually greater than costs. Your consultant's information on the screen showed that there was an operating surplus that was due to continue. That means more money each year. It's like a profit, all right? Proposition 218 does not allow that. So you need to scale back the increase to where you do not have a continuing profit each year, an operating surplus. Yes, I know you need to salt away money for critical needs, and I'll speak to that in a moment. Last time there was an increase was about two years ago. It was not a huge increase, but my bill, the, on my property tax, went up to nearly 500 a year, whereas 40 years ago, it was well under 100. Maybe that's appropriate. Maybe that's proportional. Not sure. Some things have gone up a lot less over those years. Some things have gone up a lot more. But a couple of years ago, when the last rate was put through the increase, one of the critical needs was apparently to build a fake mountain out on the lawn in front of the sewer plant and a fake waterfall and a rather self-serving sign that says that the sewer plant is the stewards of public health. I can think of a dozen other agencies that could make the same claim and perhaps with greater justification. In addition, a number of years ago, probably three decades ago, there was substantial enlargement of the plant for, probably for building, the, building the development that was happening at the time. And a very extravagant office building was built. Now, this building is not extravagant. This is a fiscally sound building, perhaps maybe too fiscally sound, all right? But the office building to the sewer plant is actually extravagant. Split face block, high open beam ceilings. It looks more like a city council chamber than a sewer plant, quite frankly. I don't think if the- I don't think if the plant is the steward of public health, they're not the steward of public finances very well. Certainly, that mountain, that fake mountain and waterfall is not a critical need, and a fancy building is not a critical need either. So I think there's some extravagance that I like to speak against. My last thing is the pumping of the water into San Francisco Bay. When that was first begun about three decades ago, and I'm not sure of the year, I spoke against it at the time. At the time, I was in contact with, through a Water Works Association, a number of farmers in the Central Valley, and I offered, I said, how would you like to have Livermore's treated effluent to use as irrigation water? They said, we'd be delighted, we'd even pay for it. So instead of spending money to pump water out in the middle of Frisco Bay where it does nobody any good, not even the salmon, you could be selling the water to the Central Valley farmers. That's a shorter pipeline, it's a lower hill, and they'd pay money for it, all right?
It said, thank you, Mr. Greenlaw.
Pardon me?
I said, thank you.
Okay. My bottom line is, I'd like you to reduce the rates to be not greater than the rate of inflation, which would be about a half of what you've projected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenlaw. Anthony Godrich, Ken Bradley, Francis Valente.
Hi, my name's Anthony Godrich, I live on Daphne Drive in Livermore. I turned in a letter also. The first thing I want to do is state that I'm in protest, I am voting no. But I noted in this report today that the majority protest does not exist. First of all, your voting method is completely slanted towards yes votes. If you don't answer, it's assumed to be yes. If you write a letter or protest, it's assumed to be no. I'd like to know how many yeses we got. I doubt seriously anybody wrote a lot of letters in saying, yes, we want this increase. So it's completely slanted away from really being a poll. It's, you've made the decision to do this, and you're going to do it anyway, from my perspective. I agree with a lot of the stuff that Russ said, these huge increases, I calculated 32, over 32% for the three cumulative years we're talking about, on top of the two, six and a half percent increases, that's 42, 45% cumulative plus in five years, which I think is a little extravagant. I'm also concerned about, you know, landlords are probably not going to respond, because they're going to pass their costs on to renters who don't have a choice in the matter, because they don't get a voice, because they don't have a parcel number. The landlord has the parcel number. Which is another point that I have, is that making you produce a parcel number for an input is kind of cumbersome, and I'm not sure I understand the need for that. You have my address, I'm a registered voter, I've been in the city for 25 years, I don't understand the parcel number requirement for that. I dug it out and put it in anyway, but I think that's a silliness to accepting my protest if I don't have that. We mentioned the higher developers' fees, blah, blah, blah. What I didn't see a lot of was cost reductions, you know? And I work in a semiconductor industry where we're constantly under pressure for reducing costs. You know, we'd love to just, okay, yeah, we need, we have all these projects, everything I work on is critical. But if I got every single critical project that I had funded, I'd blow the budget, you know, sky high, because you can't have everything be critical. So I kind of question, where's our cost reductions? Where's our fiscal planning for this? Why all of a sudden now you're asking me to front this kind of money? And I also agree with some of the statements that we had from you guys, that the fixed income people, I'm not fixed income yet, I'm not retired yet, but when I become fixed income, these kind of increases are killer for you. And we don't have a method when we're fixed income of, you know, increasing that, so something's got to give. So today, I'm not going to eat much, you know, or whatever. I think that's kind of poor, when you, when you look at the overall scope. I think the fee disproportionately penalizes our lower-income people, because it's the same fee for everybody, so somebody that's got the means, they can deal with it. And like I said, the renters are not in the equation, so they're kind of out on the left. And I'd say we have quite a few renters in Livermore right now. And the last thing I'd like to state is that I think the only fair way to do some sort of a protest or lack of protest polling is perhaps put it to the voters, or at least give everybody in Livermore the chance to bring in on it, not just the landowners or the homeowners that have a parcel number that can deal with it. So, food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godrich. Ken Bradley and Francis Valente. Mr. Bradley.
Good evening. We're not here to discuss what the sewer costs. We're here to discuss what you will allow them to spend, and they'll spend whatever they're allowed. Instead of coming up with a backup power system for $3 million, you can buy 150 KW generators for about $30,000 apiece, some of them less. You could get a couple of those, hook them up parallel as a backup system. That's a little bit different than 3 million. I look at the chart in the handout, or on the report, figure 12, which is page 147, I think, of yours, and it shows that the treatment costs over this entire period of time up to 2027 is almost the same. What's gone up the most is labor, salaries and benefits. And then there's another category, and I'm not sure what that is, it's called customer service, which is almost half the cost of wages, and yet it's on top of it, so it's not included in that. So we're basically dramatically increasing the labor costs all the way around on this. And the report really doesn't give us enough information to evaluate that. We do need to make sure we have the funds to keep our system operating. I think, you know, if somebody has a plugged-up toilet, it's annoyance, but whole neighborhood plugged up, it's a little bit more than that. But again, I think that we need to take a hard look at what we're spending, because they will spend whatever you allow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Finally, Francis Valente.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, thanks for the three minutes. What I'd like to do is, I'd like for you to take a mind excursion and look at this from my perspective. Within the last few weeks, I have received notices of proposed increases or information about such from the landscape maintenance for downtown and the projections hinting at an increase. Water rates for California service are going to go up within the shadow of an announced $49 million surplus, as per the Independent. And now this sewer charge, not to mention the garbage rates that went up after I diligently went through and tried to make sure that I was recycling properly and putting all my green waste in so I could reduce the size of my garbage can. And then they went up. I object to each and all of these increases. My income cannot be used by the City of Livermore and its agencies as its personal vehicle for funding. My motto is, live within your means, tighten your spending belts as I have. I question this voting procedure. I don't know whether it's mandated by 218, but interesting enough, you mailed out 30,000 of these little flyers? I go to the gym, there were at least 100 people there that I've talked to, and not a one of them said they remembered getting it. Well, that's because we get assaulted in the mail by these kinds of things. So having them not respond, and yet being counted as a, as a yes vote, they don't, they didn't even know they were voting on something. So please, rethink this, put it off for a year, maybe put it on the ballot, where a yes is a yes and a no is a no. I say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valente. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for comments from the council. Any comments?
I, one thing that concerns me is that we've had virtually no increase over a number of years, and now we're asking people for this gigantic increase. I think this is, I think, I agree that there's, it seems to me like we could modify this to something that's much more reasonable, it just seems huge. The other question I have is, what's this issue that Mr. Mansour brought up? We got something from the city, too, of Pleasanton, didn't we? And we haven't addressed that at all. I mean, is that, is this an issue? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, so the City of Livermore provides sewer services to Ruby Hill under a contract. So this evening, you were actually not considering that contract for services? They were noting that it relates back to, or refers to sewer rates, but if the council did wish us to sort of look at the terms of that contract
I see.
at the City of Pleasanton, that would be a separate item under Matters Initiative.
Okay. And I do think, I agree that, that this voting process, I'm sure that it's written in 218. I assume that 218 is the one, the bill, the legislation that has provided the process for the voting, but I agree that we got 1% back, right? 300 out of 30,000? And you just wonder how many people actually read it and understood it? And, you know, 300 people took the time to vote no. Did we get anybody that sent in a ballot that said yes? Yeah, so the answer is, no, we didn't. And so, no, I get that, it's a protest, but it just seems odd to me.
218 is very odd. I've, part of my day job, I've managed 218 districts now for 14, 15 years, and I do agree with a lot of the, and sorry, I just wanted to build on your comments, I don't mean to cut you off at all, but 218 is a strange beast. And every time we try to get clarifications, even if it is a senior discount or whatever you'd like to call it, you know, many times our modifications are fought by the Howard-Jarvis Taxpayers Association. So there's an active group out there that is adamant of keeping 218 the way it is. And with the protest votes, I agree, you know, you're telling people, you know, unless you protest this, this is going through. And it's only, only for utilities, and there's a reason behind that, because when you have water and sewer failing, if you do have, you know, critical needs voted down, you can have failures, you can start to have failures in your system. And what do failures mean? Well, you know, people are talking about whole neighborhoods backing up. That's, that's the beginning of your problem. I've, I've had experience with sewage spills before in my day job, and it's, it's not just the spill that occurs, you know, itself and the wonderful cleanup that comes after a major sewage spill, but then you get the environmental agencies involved because you had a sewer spill. So then you'll have EPA, fishing game, well, EPA through the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and if you've been found negligent in maintaining your system, they will fine you hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars for those spills. So it's, it's, you know, as part of that 15, 16-year experience managing these districts, typically laying it out to the residents that I deal with, it's okay if, you know, it's not a protest vote in most of the situations, it's if you don't vote for this increase for your landscaping district, that's fine, your landscaping will start to die, we can't replace it, maybe we can do hardscaping. That's, that's a consequence that's up to the residents. But when you're looking at, and I do believe we have some critical needs to our aging system, when you say we're not going to fund the bare minimum to keep it going, then those, those failures are real and not a, not something that I'm willing to entertain, but I didn't know if I cut you off or if I should just keep going, because I thought I would ramble on this one, and I still have more ramblings.
Well, you did cut me off, but you can continue to ramble.
Okay, thank you. No, I thought, I started to respond to the 218 thing, because it's burning, but I'll, I'll cede my time back to you if you, if you need it, but it is a combination
Forgot what I was going to say.
of our, of our aging system, the lack of annual increases. I've been, for the past week or two, I've been trying to come up with the correct way to express this, and I still don't think I have it, but I am thoroughly disappointed that we did not have an annual increase structure to at least keep up with CPI. So it's the aging infrastructure, it's the lack of annual increases, where we have literally dug ourselves a hole with this fund by not keeping up with, with the CPI. And then also combined with the corrections that we needed to make to comply with 218. So we didn't get, when you get into trouble with 218, that's, you know, you're starting to really put the fund at risk, and overall, that leads to, you don't generate enough money in this fund to maintain this system, you have a critical failure, now you're looking at general fund money to repair your system, because it has to be repaired. And what does general fund money mean? We always mention library, police, fire, other services throughout the city. So I think it's critical that we get back on track. It absolutely, you know, I think we need a policy of annual increases. I don't know if that's something that we conduct at the hearing, that we do state that we want to adopt a formal policy where we're at least keeping up with the CPI. I would like check-ins. If we're approving a three-year rate, maybe December or this time next year, a check-in to see how we're doing in terms of our predictions and what we're spending, but we, we really need to stop kicking the can down the road. If we do reduce it, if we don't implement the necessary increases, we're going to pay for it at some point, and the cost will go up. So I view this as a correction rather than, you know, you know, increasing it willy-nilly. But yeah, I just, this, again, I can't really frame how disappointed I am in this situation. I, I am on a, I'm a single-income household, I have been that way for 10 years. I'm not claiming poverty, but I'm stating that when you go from a dual-income, no kids, to single income with a kid, you really start noticing all of your expenses in a different light. And I notice these increases. When I go to purchase a couch, I now look for how comfortable the couch is, because I know my wife will be making me sleep on the couch with some of these decisions, but it's just, it's something that I don't look forward to assessing this to myself at all. But it's, I don't see a viable path around it. So with that, I'll stop rambling, and I'll some of recalling if you had anything else, I'm sorry.
Well, just to, to make you feel any better, when I was elected to the Zone 7 Water Board, it had been 18 years since they had raised the connection fee, and we had a 350% increase. And that was two months before my first reelection, so it was a tough thing to sell. But everybody applauds, everybody high-fives when they don't have a rate increase. Rate increases are not popular. But as you pointed out, they are necessary, because I also have had to deal with sewage spills before, and they are, that's a critical piece of infrastructure. When those fail, it is miserable, and odor control is absolutely critical. But this is something where, as was suggested, we'll put it to a vote. Well, as the vice mayor pointed out, if the vote fails and the infrastructure fails, what do you do? You're stuck with it.
We can't even put it to a vote, it's under 218.
No, but I see, but people suggest to put it to vote.
No.
Well, if, we saw this in the desert district down in Southern California, where the infrastructure was failing, and they couldn't pass a rate increase, and the infrastructure continued to fail. And this, this is a public health issue. You know, public health issue is, 80% of the improvements in public health are due to the fact that we have sanitary water and sewer systems. And this is an absolutely critical piece of infrastructure. There was the concept of the continuing profit. Well, we're not making a profit here, this is the reserves that we need and to continue to operate a facility that is a piece of critical infrastructure. The suggested we sell the water to the Central Valley. We'd actually had a proposal to sell our wastewater, Livermore's wastewater, to farmers up in North Livermore, except they were going to buy the water. The pipeline was $85 million, and I can't even imagine what the cost of the pipeline to go over to the San Joaquin Valley is. The pipeline, the lava pipeline that takes the water out of the Tri-Valley actually goes to the EBITDA pipeline, so it's not that long of a pipe. But nonetheless, the cost of the pipeline is where the major cost of the infrastructure was. And the suggestion that we should only increase this by the CPI, that if, that this was the standard that we should use, is to increase this by the CPI, and as we heard from staff, had we done that, the rates would be 675, or the savings that would not have been realized was $675. So had we gone to a strict CPI, people would have been paying more over time. And as you pointed out, yes, we need to have more, more regular and smaller raises in the rates, but as I said, everybody high-fives and they love the fact that there's no rate increase, and they celebrate that, but nobody But nobody remembers that you didn't raise the rates. They always remember when you do. And this is something that I've seen countless times. So we're not making money on this. This is what it's going to cost to ensure that we can maintain this infrastructure. And that's something that everybody in this room, everybody in this city wants that infrastructure maintained. Because when it fails, it is catastrophic. And once it fails, then you don't have the resources to repair it. So I will be, I will be supporting the increase. And we're going to come back in three years to reevaluate this. So it's not something that, we're not making money on this.
Yeah, I wanted to throw in my two cents of this as well because it's a discussion that occurs in our household all the time. As Mr. Valenti stated, we're in a quadruple or quintuple whammy right now with virtually every, every thing is going up. And I want to assure you that if you don't, you know, having worked with city staff for just a few months, I know how well, how they see their responsibilities about using your money wisely. I know that because I was in business and I was known for being, for lack of a better term, a real tight ass. And I don't like to spend money. I don't like to spend money unwisely on frivolities and things that just, you know, cute little things all over the place. This is stuff that we should have taken care of with increases over time, smaller increases. It's too late now to smooth out the increases, which would perhaps be a remedy if we could find a way to do that and still repair what we need to repair or replace right now. It's, and it's troubling to me is, I think Vice Mayor Spodowski mentioned it also, that we, you know, we're a one-and-a-half-income household now and we, you know, everything is taking away from something else. And unfortunately, that's, the mayor described pretty well what happens when you have a sewage spill. What happens when those pipes break? What happens when things back up in the neighborhoods and into houses? And we've experienced that before in my neighborhood many, many years ago. And I don't want to go through it again. I want to make sure that we have the infrastructure to handle what we deliver. We've gone over the hookup fees and stuff for new development, which cover that end of it. Nothing that we're asking anybody to pay has to do with hooking up new developments to any systems. This is about replacing used infrastructure. As you would replace tires, which are also one of those expenses, or a battery, or whatever breaks on your car, or a roof on your house. This is maintenance and repairs and R and R for things that are old and are failing because they will. That's what they do. They break down, anything does when it's got a dynamic use like that with fluids going through it all the time. It's going to eventually stop working well. So despite the reservations on one side, I've got to support it for the good of the community.
I just like.
Thank you, Carling.
Yeah, I just, I have a slightly different point of view. I recognize the need. I am disappointed, as Vice Mayor Spodowski suggested, that we haven't kept up. But on the other hand, I think the increase of 30% is just very hard for me to understand and to take. I mean, we, as Mr. Valenti pointed out, we've got all these increases that are, we're whacking people with. And I just think this one in particular just seems too big for my taste at this moment.
Honorable Mayor, one last item. If you are getting toward the end of your deliberations, you'll note in your staff report on page 80 of your packet that this involves an ordinance that actually requires a two-thirds approval. Two-thirds actually translates to four-fifths on your particular council. And with one member absent, for the item to pass this evening, it needs to be unanimous.
All right. Well, with that, the end of discussion and closing the public hearing, I will entertain a motion.
So here comes a rambling motion. No, I just, before making the motion, I would like to reiterate how this is, again, I really can't come up with the words to describe how unfortunate of a situation this is. It's something that I don't want to do. It's something that I'm hearing about from residents, from friends, from neighbors, significant others. But I think that it's necessary to maintain our system. I don't, you know, and I also hate, you know, potentially sounding like we're fear mongering up here about, oh, sewage spills everywhere and pipes and cracks. And I think that's usually, I don't like that tactic. But when it comes to utilities, it is an unfortunate reality that we do have an aging system that we have not properly maintained or have ensured that we have the funding to maintain it when it goes down. So with that last ramble, I would make a motion reluctantly to approve the proposed changes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded, do we have discussion on the motion?
I'm not going to say anymore.
Okay, with that, all in favor of the motion, is he saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Okay, so that fails. Would there be any discussion on extending this rate for, say, for five years? What would the impact be of that? Taking the.
Your item tonight allows you to basically do each of the three years. You can't extend beyond the three years that were noticed. It allows you to have a rate up to the numbers that were included in your notice and then in your staff report. Your choices could be to adopt one or two years of the rate increases or up to three years at any number up to the numbers listed in your staff report. So for example, you could propose to do either year one, and we would return to you in a year, or to the two years, or you could do a smaller increase over up to three years. You are not permitted this evening to extend the rate increases beyond the three-year period because that was what was noticed.
So for example, we could go with a, just off the top of my head, say, a 5% this year and then perhaps 7% for three years after that.
You can do the first three of those years. You could do 5% this year, you could do a seven, and you're done. You cannot go beyond the three-year timeframe that was noticed and you can't go beyond each individual year that was noticed and the percentages on those. So, but if you did five, seven, and seven, that would be consistent with your noticing. So you are permitted to do something like that.
And then come back with the evaluation next time.
Or you could do one year at the recommended rate and return at that time. Any of those would be legally permissible.
One of the questions or comments that I had is that I would like annual check-ins on what's happening in terms of the money spent, the projects, the need. Because as I understand it, these are caps, we can go below. Most people don't expect you to go below once you establish a cap. But I would recommend that we at least discuss the first year at the proposed rate. If we do that, then we are back here next year, same process, same notification process for the next year if we don't do multiple years. I am reluctant to do a decrease across the board for the three years because I don't know what the projections would then look like if it's still tanking our charts, if we still go into the negative. I'm trying to avoid that situation where we go into the negative in terms of the capital projects that are needed and the operations. So at the very least, I think we should consider the first year at the proposed rate and then do another check-in next year if that's the route, so.
Okay, discussion on this suggestion? Are you going to make a motion on that or are you still just confirming this point?
You don't, to Mark's suggestion of five, seven, and seven, you're not in favor of that?
It didn't come from staff, I think it came from the mayor. I'm not sure.
No, I thought Mark made that suggestion as an example.
I said five and three sevens, he said five and two sevens.
I was trying to illustrate that that is legally permissible, but that the third seven was not legally permissible on that one.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
What is that percentage rate due to the projections? So without knowing the projections, five, seven, seven, three years from now, whether I'm here or not, whoever's dealing with this, well now, they may be faced with the same thing that we're facing that has been caused by, quite frankly, you know, the increase is not happening at an appropriate rate. Kicking the can down the road is the situation I'd like to avoid. If we need to do a hard correction for a few years to get to some normalcy, I hate that. I don't like it at all, but I understand it. So I just don't want to keep, continue to shortchange ourselves.
So the idea would be that we could do five, seven, and seven, but then we don't know, you check back in, so it may be, again, 12% in four years?
It may be five, seven, seven, and then instead of future years, we're just doing CPI. It may be five, seven, 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 six, seven, eight. Who knows? So it may be a spread over 10 years now that we need to go above CPI instead of three years at an increase and then future years at CPI. So I just, I don't know. I don't know what that does, I don't have the data, so I'm reluctant to go past what has been analyzed.
Right.
Unless I had an Excel spreadsheet in front of me right now that I can start, you know.
And a crystal ball.
Yeah, but that's a little, you don't do that on the fly.
The end result is that we don't, we don't have the numbers to adjust. We can't on the fly adjust the percentages and come up with the revenue numbers that we need to make sure that the infrastructure remains sound. And until I were able to see that, I wouldn't, I couldn't really entertain any other differentiation in the rates. So I'd kind of be unwilling to take that up. I don't know exactly how it frames something. We're to go year by year if we're to do anything right now. That's, seems like it might be, we'd get something started, but.
So you've got a suggestion to go year by year, so 9% this year?
I think the same, the same steepness of the increase comes in there. And that's the other thing to consider. If you consider a 5% one year, that's, reduce it. Because part of it is that the increase, the level of the increase, it goes from a level that was unfortunately remained level for too long to a situation that is too steep right now, I think. And if we maintain that first year at 9%, I think that's going to be too much, too, so.
But then recognizing that later on, we may need to actually raise it more to catch up.
Yeah, I'd rather find a three-year plan.
If we wanted to go to CPI, it may delay us going to a CPI format until we can normalize the rate.
Yeah, well, maybe seeing what, yeah, it's hard to formulate right now, so I want to phrase it. I would love to see a CPI index in an ordinance, absolutely.
Right, but that's, we're probably looking at between four and six years down the road before we can approach that. Although depending on what rate we end up with here for the next one year, two years, three years, it may be, we don't know when we'll hit CPI. But we do need to catch up at some point. It's just a question of how long it's going to be until we catch up.
Oh, I'm with you, I understand, it's just.
So do we have, so do we have a motion? Or what would be the impact if we did nothing? I don't think that's really an option. But we need, we need four votes tonight.
You need four votes tonight, so you can do several things, as we discussed before. If there was consensus around one year at the rate noticed here, that would be permitted by law. You could adopt one year, the item would then, of course, automatically return to you at the future year. If there is no consensus on any number, you could continue the item to a date certain when five members of the council sit. And then as a totality, reconsider the item. And at that particular time, you have still all of the same legal options in front of you.
Question on that. Aren't we running into a timeframe because of the end of June? We need tonight and then we need the formal adoption. So we are effectively out of time unless we do. But that was also noted.
Well, the advantage is I won't be here at the next meeting.
Yeah, well, I mean, regardless of who's here at the next meeting, didn't we notify tonight and?
You did notify tonight, and the sewer bill, unlike the water bill, actually goes on the tax bill. So you would miss the, you would miss the deadline to place that on the tax bill. So there would be a supplemental, yes, you would either miss the year or you'd need to do a supplemental billing, which has costs back to the ratepayers as well.
It's usually like 10 bucks a parcel or something like that if you go, or higher, I thought it was, but anyway.
Don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, but it's, so if we don't make a decision tonight, then we're not assessing at all any kind of increase for next year. And basically, we're adding, we're continuing to add to the problem that we so thoroughly criticized tonight.
Maybe I could add a little bit of clarity when it comes to the numbers. One thing I was discussing, well, if we do a reduced percentage increase, what does that do to the later years? One thing I mentioned in my presentation was, this is three years that we're moving forward with, but we actually looked at 10 years in our financial plan, in our planning period. So in that financial plan, in years four and five, it was around 7%. And then after that, six through 10 was down to 3. So if you do anything on the front end here tonight of less than nine, most likely that you compute as year six through 10 is not going to be 3. It's going to be four or five. So you have some flexibility there. I can't give you the exact number of how much it will tick up. But I do know right now, the 10-year plan had year six through 10 down to the 3% CPI as your typical average. So hopefully that gives you a little bit more information for you to deliberate and make a decision.
Normally, I'd be in favor of smoothing. So if we could see a smoothing over a 10-year period. But the hole is so deep right now and we don't know how that six, seven, and eight-year will play out in terms of the economy and labor costs and costs of material. It hopefully would be only four, or five, or six. But typically, at least in my experience, it shoots up higher than that. So again, we don't have the numbers in front of us. It's very difficult, you know, to decide. But in this case, with the costs that we're dealing with, any kind of smoothing translates into more money overall over that 10-year period.
Yeah, and that 3% included already the escalations of labor and general costs.
You know, I think part of the problem is that at least, people are looking at 30% increase in three years. I mean, I think that's, to me, that's the issue, is this huge number. And if you were to say, start with a couple of years at 7, and to Vice Mayor Spodowski's point, smooth it, I think that'd be more palatable to the residents. But I think the problem, at least from my point of view, is a gigantic 30% over the next three years.
Well, in that regard, would you be supportive of, say, three sevens?
That'd be a lot more palatable to me than.
And then you would come back in three years with another adjustment?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would still argue in favor of the one year at nine and then we do this again next year and.
No, well.
Because I don't know what that 2% difference.
I would vote no against that.
Okay, so then we're back to where we began, so.
Would you be willing to make a motion for three sevens?
Yeah, I'll move that we change the rate by 7% for each of the next three years.
And then come back.
And come back in three years.
See how we could, how smoothing would be after that fact.
I kind of like that plan better than the original one, so I would second that.
Well, just recognizing that it's going to come back and bite us in a couple of years, but it makes it more palatable in the short run.
Can I discuss that one point further? If anything, I would then argue that we do the seven for one year and see then next year what that decision did to the projections. Maybe, maybe our projections are different, I don't know, based on the condition of the system. I just, again, I don't know what that 2% difference, you know, this year and, you know, the following percentage, you know, throughout the, I don't know what it's going to do with the overall projection. And I just think it's the, you know, the right thing to do to update our projections whenever we make a change. But then locking ourselves into three years, it could be fine. You know, we could stick with three sevens over the year, not, I don't, I also don't think it's an ideal situation when you're going out for, you know, the noticing and putting every. the noticing and putting everybody through this every year. But I need to know what it's going to be doing to the overall projections. Because that could be a 1% difference here and there. It could make a very large difference overall. I just don't know.
That's a good point, yeah. You're right, because we don't know, there are so many variables three years from now that may change our revenue or expense columns significantly.
Of course, then what are the costs of going through this whole process? Sending out 30,000 ballots and to do that every year for the next three years? So I would, I'd be willing to support the Councilman Rick Carling's motion of three sevens. And then.
So if I stick with one seven, then we're back at another stalemate.
To support your effort that we reevaluate this and recognize that it's, the smoothing is going to take a longer period of time. It's going to be more palatable in the short term. But then, in three years, we will be able to see what that smoothing is going to look like through the course of the next seven for that 10 years.
Well, we know what the smoothing looks like now, but it's a greater dip sooner. So you're, you know, again, you're getting into the inflation factors and you're actually, it's going to cost residents more to quote "smooth" the rate in the future than it will now.
Except at CPI, it would cost them more.
Right, I mean, and there's a lot of, you know, should haves in this. But we're effectively saying that, yeah, you're going to pay more later down the road. But the one question that I have for staff, if we smooth it at 7% for the first three years, does that prevent us from completing any of the critical projects that you've identified? I mean, are we going to experience budget shortfalls where now we can't replace something that's leaking? We can't upgrade?
Probably not. It might leave us with a lower reserve balance at the end. We may eat through more of the money we had in the bank, and you may not meet your target for what you wanted in reserves. But we probably wouldn't have to defer projects at that level.
So then it could lead to higher rates later on if we're not meeting those reserves. Or should something fail that we didn't have the money for, we would need to repair it and then increase. Then we're looking back at maybe a 10% or whatever. I don't, I'm just throwing out numbers. So it's throwing some uncertainty. It's going to cost us more down the road if we smooth it to that degree.
But if we don't pass something tonight, then it doesn't go on the tax bill.
Then it's even worse. No, I know, I know, but I'm just making sure that people are aware of that, that by smoothing it tonight, we are basically charging our future selves more.
Yes.
Maybe.
I think it's a pretty definite, that, you know, instead of going down to 3%, we're going to have a few more years of four, or five, six, whatever it is, so.
But that way, it makes it a more palatable entry into this whole process.
It makes it more palatable for the first three years, correct? But then after that, it will be higher increases guaranteed. So that's all what I'm saying. It's, again, it's a big hole that we're trying to dig out of. And I think that there is a need for that course correction. But if it's, if I'm not going to get any play on seven at one year, I think then we'll have to do the seven at three.
So we have a, we do have a motion for three sevens. We have a second for three sevens. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, the few who are saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? Okay.
And to clarify, the motion basically was for the rates as noted, plus the rest of the recommendations included in the staff material before you for the various items.
That was the directed motion?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, we're rolling up onto the magic hour of nine o'clock. Five-minute break? Okay? Okay? Okay, five-minute break. Good evening, and welcome back to the Livermore City Council for May 22nd. I'd just like to restate the previous motion that, the motion was for the original staff recommendation of three 9% increases. That vote was, the motion was made by Vice Mayor Spodowski, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. The voice, the vote was three to one with Councilmember Carling voting no. So just to cover all the legal bases there. All right, so with that, moving back to the agenda. We're going to 6.01, the Downtown Steering Committee Rules of Procedure and Extension of the ENRA with Presidio. Mr. Stewart, looks like you're on deck here.
I am. Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, members of the council. So we're here tonight, moving forward with the council's goals to make the downtown a priority. Back in April, you adopted Resolution 27, 201741, confirming the formation of the Downtown Steering Committee, the appointment of its members, and establishing their duties, responsibilities, and schedule. That resolution also requires the council to approve the rules of procedure. Those rules of procedure were adopted by the Downtown Steering Committee at their second meeting, or excuse me, their first meeting, and there are also attachment one on your staff report. So the Steering Committee's had three meetings so far since its inception and has identified a schedule and work program to develop an outreach strategy for issues related to the development of the downtown. At the second meeting, they reviewed the scope and identified a schedule that added two additional meetings in order to ensure sufficient time to complete a comprehensive work program and then report back to council. By the way, the next meeting of the Downtown Steering Committee is this Thursday, 6:30 in this chambers. The additional meeting dates will still allow the committee to complete its work by the end of June, which will allow the council to hear the committee's final report at a special meeting on July 31st. On January 23rd, the council directed the city manager to execute a four-month extension of the Exclusive Negotiation Rights Agreement, or ENRA for short, with Presidio Companies for the development of a downtown hotel. That extended agreement expires tomorrow, May 23rd. Presidio Companies is requesting a six-month extension of that agreement for the development of a downtown hotel out to November of 2017. Following the Steering Committee's efforts, staff anticipates public outreach to occur in August and September with a report back to council in October. And if the council will provide a direction in October, then Presidio would be able to prepare a proposal and negotiate with the city on the purchase and sale of the land and other improvements for the development of a hotel. So this would allow Presidio to work with the city through this process and should give sufficient time for the council to receive the Steering Committee report, conduct outreach, and hear from the community for a decision on the downtown hotel. So in summary, we're recommending that you adopt a resolution amending Resolution 201741 to modify a Steering Committee schedule, adopt a resolution approving the Steering Committee's rules of procedure, and then direct the city manager to sign an amendment to the Exclusiative, Exclusive Negotiating Rights Agreement with Presidio Companies, extending it through the end of November 2017. And that concludes the staff report. Presidio Companies is also in attendance tonight, and we're all available for questions.
Okay, any questions for staff at this point? Okay. Let's see. Let's see, would Presidio be considered the applicant at this point? And therefore, the, so with that, I would give Presidio the opportunity to speak if you wish.
Sure.
Actually, Rakesh Patel, speaking for Presidio.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, council members, I didn't prepare anything to say. Of course, we've met with staff and all of you a number of times to talk about our continued enthusiasm about the hotel, our optimism about the market, and our wish to get this done as soon as we possibly can. I know it's been quite some time since we started this process, but I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's continuing to focus on the downtown. And we hope to be here again in November talking about an actual purchase and sale. Thank you.
True. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Okay, with no other questions, I will opening the public hearing. David Rounds, Mary Ann Brent, Gene King, Jeff Caskey. Mr. Rounds, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council and staff. Thanks for the time. The Steering Committee process for downtown is really going well, and it seems to be on track and moving forward. And this Thursday, as was already mentioned, the agenda will cover hotel and parking. So I'm speaking now because I do not believe that a decision should be made on granting exclusive development rights, negotiation rights for six months to Presidio or to anyone else until after this Thursday Steering Committee meeting, which is a problem because it pushes us past the deadline for the original agreement, the four-month extension. Presidio has been a good partner for the city so far, and they were the only hotel developer that made the cut in last year's process. Their original six-month EDNR was extended in January for an additional four months, which expires tomorrow. And again, two days after tomorrow, the Steering Committee is going to hear from Presidio and others as part of the committee's discussion on hotel and parking issues. So before extending the EDNR to Presidio, wouldn't it be best to first get past this Thursday's meeting? A critical item for many of us has been the physical location of the hotel. Presidio's original response to last year's RFP had been, had the hotel location on the east side. But Presidio has also said that they can make either the east side or the west side work. Clearly, they're a smart business person keeping their options open. The city needs to keep its options open also. We understand Presidio's preferences. We need to understand Presidio's preferences here about location and parking and whatever, and what better way to understand what they believe is best for them than to hear their presentation and their answers to the questions of the subcommittee on Thursday? So why limit extending Presidio's options at this point? I believe for the same reasons that the original extension of the EDNR was granted in January. Finding a hotel developer during last year's process was a challenge, and Presidio stepped up, and that was good. What happens, though, if it becomes clear from the Steering Committee's work and the subsequent public comment, public input, that the downtown project changes significantly and changes enough so that other potential hotel developers could become interested? That would be a good thing. But would new hotel, would new potential developers be as interested in stepping up if they knew that Presidio had exclusive rights locked in until the end of November? I'm not suggesting that the council cut Presidio out, but a six-month extension seems unnecessary and restrictive. And instead, I suggest that the council extend the EDNR for one, two, or three months and keep our options open, as open as possible, and let the public input process work with as much flexibility as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. Mary Ann Brent, Gene King, Jeff Caskey.
Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, good evening. I would ask you not to extend Presidio's Exclusive Negotiating Rights Agreement. Keep it to July of this year. Why? Because Presidio's first draft showed a location for the hotel on the east side of Livermore Avenue, jammed up against the Bankhead Theater. And I have not seen a plan from them for the west side, where so many hundreds of Livermore residents came to meetings here at the city council and asked for it to be on the west side. They left the comfort of their homes to come here, hundreds of people. And the residents, I believe, have spoken. So in my opinion, the east side simply will not do. Please do not extend Presidio's Exclusive Rights Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brent. Gene King, Jeff Caskey.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Gene King. At the January meeting, when the ENRA with Presidio Company was on the council agenda, Presidio Representative, Mr. Patel, made the following statement, which I presume that he still supports. And this is quoting from the video. "Presidio is absolutely 1,000% committed to building an upscale hotel in downtown Livermore, somewhere on the site. The question today is not where the hotel should sit. The question today is not what the hotel should look like. The question today is not even what the hotel should be named. Those are all questions for the community to answer immediately after today. What we are asking for today is to continue to be involved in the process as your partner in this process going forward. And that means whatever you want it to mean. That means we step aside for a couple of months while the community figures out what side the hotel sits on. Or that means we stand by the community to help them figure out what side the hotel sits on. Me and my colleague, Michael Bisch, were just having dinner before today's meeting, and we're talking about how cool, actually, the hotel might look on the west side if it was sitting right above Blacksmith Square. We can make the hotel work on the west side if we figured out Blacksmith Square. But we can't answer that question. We can't help answer that question until we have the opportunity to do so. And so today, I stand here and I ask the question, does the council want Presidio to continue? I think you know the answer to that question from our perspective. We absolutely want to continue, excuse me, in this process, and we hope you give us that opportunity. And I will continue to come here until you tell me not to do anymore. Thank you." Okay, so what I'm saying is that Presidio is equally open, I presume, still, to the east side and the west side. And what I'm saying is that we have not gone through the Steering Committee process of developing the plans that are going to be presented to the community for their input. The Steering Committee is going to go through June and present the plans to the city council in July. And I think the end of July, when those plans are made available to the public, would be a good time to open it up possibly with the ENRA. So I'm suggesting that we only extend the ENRA to Presidio for two months or to actually to July 31st, which is when the meeting is. Because I think that it is very important, as was presented at the last, I think it was the end of March meeting, where we said it is very important to maintain our negotiating leverage. And I think that by extending the ENRA for a very long time, we may lose our negotiating leverage. And I also believe that if the, if the ENRA for Presidio is extended, other developers or hoteliers, which might be interested when they see the plans that come out of the Steering Committee, they might be discouraged from presenting their ideas. So I recommend that the ENRA only be extended until July 31st at the completion of the Steering Committee meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Finally, Jeff Caskey.
Mayor and council again. Jeff Caskey, I'm a member of your Downtown Steering Committee, as you well know, but I'm speaking purely for myself tonight. Personally, I believe that Presidio can be a good partner with the city in the upcoming development project. To make that happen, I'd like the city to maintain negotiating leverage by extending the ENRA for a significantly shorter time. In particular, during these early days, when the city and the public will be weighing the value of the hotel amenity against its costs, we need prospective developers to dig deep, to give us their best deal on parking, location, room count, land price, and architecture. And I think that having some negotiating leverage there is an important part of getting them to work hard. I propose extending ENRA until the conclusion of the currently scheduled Steering Committee meetings. Given the input then from the Steering Committee, will be a good time to check back in with Presidio to ensure that the further extension makes good sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey. Okay, with that, that's all the cards that I have, so close the public comment period. Thank you for your comments. I continue to be heartened by the fact that we do have a hotelier that is enthusiastic about the project, that he's willing to work with the community. And this has been a long, long, arduous process. This has been, I believe, the third or fourth hotel that we've tried to bring into the downtown, none of which has been successful. And I think that we have someone that is certainly committed to this process and committed to work with the community. And in that regard, we're still in the planning process since we've got somebody that has proven to build a hotel. And he, my focus is this needs to be a successful hotel. And that's my main criteria. And yeah, you can put a lot of requirements on it and a lot of other stuff. And I don't know if that's going to make it successful. And to be able to come in and say, well, you have to meet all of these requirements. Yeah, we're going to find out what the community wants. And I think that's very important to find out what the community wants. And we're going to talk about that as we go through with this. I think one thing that's going to be very important is not just single huge workshops, because sometimes you don't always get the best information out of one big workshop. I think it's going to be key to have smaller neighborhood workshops to get a real good sense of what. sense of what the community wants, and what the individual communities want. And also what, so we get a broad sense of the community at large, because yeah, there are people that are working two jobs, or they have four-hour commutes, and they can't, can't get in here. Polling, I think polling should certainly be a part of this process. And we encourage that as the steering committee goes ahead, and several of the steering committee members are here tonight, that they include polling the, the community at large to, again, refine what it is that the community wants. And we have heard from Presidio that they are absolutely willing to work with the community. And the reason that we haven't gotten farther along in this process is really because the city is still trying to figure out what it wants, and I mean, the city as both those of us up here, and then the broad community that is out there as well. So, we have a partner that is absolutely committed to work with the community and with the city, and I, I'm not willing to let them go, actually, at this point. I would like to keep them on board, because they are committed. And I think if we get too focused on concern about losing leverage, we may lose our hotelier. And I don't see any downside of keeping someone who has said that they're willing to work with this community to get something that the community wants and that is going to be successful. So, those are, those are my points. Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, I largely agree with that. I might, I will say that the comment was made that the, the original plan had the hotel on the east side. Recall that that was the Lennar Plan, and Presidio did, had no or very little input into the location or the design. And so I think we need to give Presidio a chance to show on Thursday what, what they're thinking about. I don't know, I mean, losing, talking about losing negotiating leverage, I think that could work both ways. And I worry that, I guess I'm more worried that we're going to lose their interest if we don't at least put up a good faith effort to extend it to, to November, or the end of November. Excuse me.
Councilmember Coobler?
I kind of want to echo what the mayor was saying. I've worked, had conversations with Mr. Patel regarding, there is no plan that I know of, there are concepts and ideas and things floating around, but so much depends, and what I'm looking forward to is what the steering committee comes up with. I'm waiting to be presented with something from the steering committee that shows me what this very diverse group of individuals from town, representing so many different groups, can agree on. That's what I want to see, first of all. And in order to do that and not, not lose our hotel partner in this, I want to make sure he's going to be in here. And I was at those meetings too, where he, you know, the east side or west side didn't matter. And I, you know, we may have to hold him to that. Again, I want to see how the steering committee decides on that, or agrees on. If they're able to agree on that, that's, I call that a really huge first step, quite honestly, if we can get some agreement in there.
Well, recall that, that's not the, right, but you've got to remember, that's not, that's not the purview of the steering committee.
No, no.
We're not going to agree on, we're going to let the, provide the information to the community as part of the outreach to get feedback from them, so.
Absolutely.
The community's going to be planning this.
Right, right. Yes, but I want it, I want to hear from the steering committee, but I don't want to lose Presidio. That's my main message here.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you, you touched on my main point. I'm trying to wrap my head around the schedule and, and the purpose of the steering committee. I don't believe we're going to have a final recommendation at the end of July. I think quite the opposite. I thought the purpose of the steering committee was to discuss certain issues and figure out a way to frame those issues to the public, and then we go out for public outreach. So if the steering committee completes everything in July, maybe, I don't know, and maybe I'll look to Paul and Steve to see if our consultant can develop a, an effective public outreach campaign and all the materials, so we would have a meeting in August, which I don't think would be possible. Usually, we go dark in August. Last year, when we conducted public hearings in August, we were criticized for holding them over the summer break, and people were saying that they weren't able to participate. So potentially, that pushes it to September for the public outreach. Then based on the results of the public outreach, you would then, you know, have an October-ish timeframe. I'm trying to be realistic. I'm not saying that, you know, we could push everything quickly, but I, I think to do this in an effective and meaningful manner, you're looking at October or November, coming up with some kind of final presentation to the council for some decision. So I think that, just on the face of it, it will take us that long to come forward with some final decision that Presidio may or may not be interested in, depending on what we decide. That would be up to them, but we would also have their input on, on certain aspects of what they believe, you know, based on their industry knowledge, what would work, and some of the challenges with, with both sites. East side versus west side, there's challenges to either side. I did bring up, and I wanted to mention this in the August meetings, the circulation concern that I had with the east side. I didn't mean for that to be an end-all, be-all, it kills the east side. When I bring up concerns at a meeting, it's, okay, staff, okay, developer, how would you address this? And then if that's adequate, then move on to the next concern. There are equal concerns on the west side, and we will get into that over time. We're researching how land was purchased, how much we need to pay back, what triggers it, where things are put, how does it affect the surrounding area? So all of these questions will be answered in, in a, in a timeframe that I don't think is by the end of July. So I have no problem extending it to November. I appreciate their, their work, Presidio's work, and their, their industry knowledge. You know, when, you know, the hotel, the hotelier was the only one to make the cut. Basically, that was our only hotelier to apply, you know, throughout the process, in, in my mind. But we have been at this for several years, with several configurations and several potential hoteliers, and they, they haven't necessarily been beating down our door to develop in, in Livermore, but the market conditions might be just right, where a certain type of hotel would work. So I expect all of this to be laid out during the public process. I don't know what form that will take, that'll be up to the consultants and the, the steering committee to, or the work group, whatever they're called, it's getting late, you know, to decide what's the most effective method for the outreach, but we do need public outreach. I do not consider the steering committee to be the effective public outreach. They are a great group of individuals who have some wonderful ideas, and hopefully we can come up with some kind of palatable plan that's realistic and that the residents like. So, that's it.
We make a motion?
Sure. I, I think we have, we have multiple items correct.
And we just moved to accept the staff recommendation.
There you go.
Okay.
I'll move to accept the staff recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Staff recommendation, second by Vice Mayor Spodowski. Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstention? Passed unanimously. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Moving on to 6.02, the extension of letters of credit and change to daily interest rate.
Daily.
This is on the certificates of participation. This is for the Bankhead Theater.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Eric Peterson. I am presenting the item in front of you today because, because our administrative services director, Douglas Alessio, is actually out of town, attending a national finance conference. We're here today to renew our letter of credit associated with the 2014 Series A and Series B Variable Rate Certificates of Participation, also commonly known as a COP. We're doing that because it's due to expire this year. In September of 2014, the city entered into a multi-party settlement agreement to purchase the, the Bankhead Theater in order to keep it as a community amenity. Per the agreement, the city caused execution and delivery of a COP to purchase the Bankhead in the amount of 9.3 million. Because the theater is not seen as an essential city facility, the settlement agreement also required the city to cause execution and delivery of a second 2014 Series B Variable Rate COP in the amount of 49.8 million. That 2014 Series B COP actually refunded an existing 2008 COP, which financed numerous essential city facilities, including the Civic Center campus. Variable rate COPs are a tool that the city has used to keep interest costs low during this current prolonged period of historically low interest rates. Letters of credit are an essential component of variable rate COPs. They act as a credit, credit enhancement tool to ensure investor confidence. They also facilitate the periodic interest rate reset. LOCs are also issued for relatively short periods of time compared to the underlying obligation. The current LOC that is expiring was valid for three years and had a weekly periodic interest rate reset. With the expiration coming up, the options the city looked into was, one, possibly to retire the 2014 A and B COPs, basically pay them off. However, that would use a large portion of the general fund reserves, and that could actually set the city up to, to be vulnerable to a possible emergency event or even downturn in the economy. Another option that the city looked into was to refinance this obligation to a fixed rate. With the, the fixed rate is approximately 3.5% at this time, and our variable rate is about 1.3%. Interest rates are not trending towards significant increases, so it would make more sense to stick with a variable rate. Within the variable rate spectrum, the daily interest rates were actually lower than the weekly interest rate change. If the city was to change to the daily interest rate, that would actually cause, would actually allow the city to realize approximately $85,000 annually in interest costs. In order to change from the weekly to the daily interest rate reset, there's three tasks that the city needs to take care of. One would be to amend the reimbursement agreement, which governs the city's obligation to pay the bank for draws on the LOC. That we'd also, the city would also need to amend the letters of credit agreement, which define the fees paid to this, by the city to the bank, along with extending the expiration date of the letters of credit. And thirdly, the city would need to issue a supplement to the official statement reflecting a change from weekly interest rate resets to daily interest rate resets. So tonight, staff is requesting that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the remarketing of city variable rate COP in a daily interest rate mode and approving a supplement to the official statement. Thank you. And staff's available, and I have Chris Lynch, our bond counsel, with us today as well.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Carling?
So if we're going to save money with a daily versus weekly, why didn't we do this to begin with?
Back in 2014, the spread between the daily and weekly wasn't as great, and it wasn't as favorable.
So what changed? Why did it change? Let me put it that way.
Yeah. Yeah, hi, Chris Lynch from Jones Hall. Actually, the person who can answer that, John Armstrong, the city's financial advisor, isn't here tonight, so we could get you an answer to that, but I don't know the answer as to what's changed in economic conditions over the last year.
Fundamentally, what happens when you have a spread between short, short-term and slightly longer-term rates is means there's more uncertainty in the market. The bigger that spread is, is generally that there is some version of uncertainty between the daily and weekly, and people are willing to pay a premium to lock in a rate for a week that they weren't willing to do just three years ago. So in times of great stability between your short, medium, and long-term rates, the spreads between them shrink. And in fact, we had very, very low rates and very low spreads at the short and medium term when we did this three years ago. This is actually a little bit more of a normal spread between the daily and weekly, and it just reflects the changing market conditions. We believe that essentially, there's not a downside to going to the daily rates at this particular time. Our practice had been in the past to go with weekly, simply because it was a tiny bit less administrative cost, and the spreads were very, very tight.
Okay. Councilmember Coobler? Are there any, any instances you know of where there have been, kind of out of the ordinary types of increases or decreases in that value, or is the, how do rates stay there? I mean, given a 52-week rate history, what would you say your, your difference is? What's your high and a low?
I think that'd be a better question for our financial advisor, who's not here tonight.
And the one, the only time that we've had very extraordinary difficulties with remarketing is when the underlying letter of credit bank had trouble. We had to replace our letter of credit a couple of years ago, which caused significant concern. And during the financial crisis, there were a few weeks when there was at least some question about how effectively the remarketing would happen, but even
That's kind of what I was referring to.
During the middle of the worst meltdown we've seen to our financial system, we ultimately were able to get the remarketings completed. So from that perspective, we still believe this is sort of a very viable tool to utilize versus, for example, fixed, because, simply because the premium is so large.
Okay, so the 9.38 million dollars, is that strictly debt principal, or does that include debt and interest?
So your existing Series A bonds is 9.38 of original principal, so that does not include any of the anticipated interest over the 27-year life of the debt.
Okay, so if the interest rate were to go down, the 9.38 would not go down?
No, what would go, what would go down is your total obligation. In fact, you have adopted a host community impact fee reserve policy, and that reserve policy requires that your staff report to you once a year what the status of those fees are, what the balance in the account is, and in fact, so you adopted that policy in July of 2015. There was an annual report in 2016, and your 2017 report will come to you in October, along with a number of your reserve reports. If interest rates drop, it drops the total amount that has to be repaid, but ultimately, that principal has to be repaid over the 27-year period.
Right, and the principal's the 9.38 million?
Yes, sir.
And I realize that, that if you knew the answer to this question, you wouldn't be working here, you'd be in the Bahamas somewhere. But what is your best guesstimate? Do you figure that the repayment cost of that 9.3 million dollars is, based on your best guesstimate of what the interest rates are going to be doing?
With the caveat that you gave, I'm not going to actually give my estimates of that. What, what I am going to do is your HCIF policy quoted several numbers there to give some context to you when you adopted the actual policy. There is an index which basically looks out back over the variable rate market, and that's actually called SIFMA. And so what we did is we took several different numbers there. As of the moment you were actually considering the actual adoption of the HCIF policy in 2015, interest rates were at extraordinarily all-time lows, with the actual all-in interest rate for a variable rate COP, which actually has three different components to it, being at .082%, okay? That's far below the average. That would have required a total repayment of about 11.6 million. If you use the three-year average of the actual SIFMA rates, that takes the all-in number up to .16, which boosts your repayment schedule to 11.8 million dollars roughly. If you use a 10-year average, which takes the SIFMA rate up to 1.37, and coincidentally, that's just about where we are in the market today, with the three components of your variable rate in, that would take your in, that would take your repayment to about 14.8 million over the total life of the debt. If however, SIFMA actually moves to its long-term average interest rate, that would mean that interest rates would climb to 2.5% on average during that 27-year period, and that would actually mean that your repayment would be about 17.6 million. So you can see there's a range. I would take the 11.5 or 11.6 at the bottom out, simply because we don't see that environment anymore. We haven't seen that since that time, and we don't expect to return to that environment unless something extraordinarily strange goes on in the economy, which might not be good for us in other ways. So somewhere between the, realistically, the 10-year, the three-year average and the essentially 26-year average would be much more likely, since you're currently paying essentially the 1.3 plus or minus rate, that would be a 14.8 number. So somewhere between that and essentially the long-term average is probably our best guesstimate. But again, like you said, predictions are hard, and those about the future are even harder, but this essentially is looking backwards using this same exact tool over a very long period of time.
So the 9.38 million is going to end up costing probably somewhere around 14.8 million to pay back?
Or a little more.
Yes.
Over the 27 years.
I remember when we looked at the HCIF, the value of the HCIF over time was somewhere between like 14 to 20 million?
That is correct. We actually had a consultant in 2012 do an analysis of essentially, if you remember, the host community impact fees come from dumping fees for the Altamont and Basco landfills. The amount of the fee depends on several factors. The most notable is how much garbage is dumped. That depends on two main factors: which communities are utilizing the dumps, and essentially, what's the diversion rate? How effectively have we been at recycling? The more effective we are at recycling, recyclable materials do not generally count against the fee, so it is actual trash. So those are the two factors.
So if we're successful at recycling, we actually get less money?
That's it. So sort of just like that can rebate thing that you have for the aluminum containers, the more of those that actually go back and get their nickel, the less money you have for recycling. So yes, the actual fees depend on the recycling rate, on the one hand. The other thing is economic cycles. It's just flat-out related to the economic cycles. A big chunk of what goes into the landfill is construction debris, and the other is consumer product debris. Both of those drop during recessions. So for that reason, we had our waste stream consultant, HF&amp;H, go through a comprehensive analysis of both Altamont and Basco, and they came up with essentially a most likely base case scenario of 18.1 million over the time from essentially at that point in 2012 through when the landfill would be at capacity, which was estimated to be at 2041. There were a couple of key assumptions they had in there. One is that San Francisco would ultimately leave the landfill, and that looks like that prediction is going to be correct. The second is that San Leandro would not come to the Altamont in 2020. We still don't have information on that one, since it's only 2017, but that went into the 18.1 million dollar estimate. They also did a range of other estimates based on inflation rates, recycling rates, and economic cycles that gave a range of 13.3 million through 24 million that the HCIF would generate over that same 27-year period. In addition to the interest rates you talked about earlier and the cost of the debt, the city is actually the owner of that building and responsible for maintenance of the actual physical exterior of the building and some of its major components, not the interior systems, which is generally the responsibility of the tenant. And we estimate that over the life of the debt, that will also cost us 3.7 million that needs to be added to any interest cost.
So if we're talking about 14.8 to 17.6, which would be the cost of repaying back this 9.38, and you're saying the average will probably be bringing in about 18.1 to 20, if you add the 3.7 million to the 14.8, 17.6, we're either losing money or just hanging on?
Your staff estimates that it's going to be close, based on economic cycles, as to whether basically every penny of the HCIF will be utilized, whether we will ultimately need to provide general fund support for this, because in the case of both the maintenance obligation and the HCIF fees and the costs here for the debt for the certificate of participation, the general fund stands behind both of those debts. So in a really great scenario where interest rates are lower than they have been historically, maintenance costs are lower than they have been historically, and HCIF revenues are higher than projected, ultimately, there would be enough money to make all of that work. If all of those come in simply at the averages, we'll be a little bit short. The council was informed of that at the time they took on the debt for the HCIF and this Series A certificates of participation, and concluded that the benefit of ultimately retaining the public facility in public ownership was worth that risk, essentially in the out-years of at least a modest shortfall, which is what essentially our most likely scenario is, a small shortfall out of the fees.
So when I've talked about this, I've suggested that the city fronted the money. Basically, we took out a loan. We took out a loan to finance this, and then we're being reimbursed by the HCIF.
That's close. I think a better way of saying is, we did take out a loan, and the HCIF funds are ultimately making the payments on that loan. Ultimately, the general fund, you didn't withdraw general funds from somewhere to make that loan, but yes, in the name of the city, we took out a loan, which was a certificate of participation, and we're utilizing HCIF fees to repay that loan.
So we fronted the money, and now we're getting paid back through HCIF?
The HCIF fee is what's repaying that loan, yes.
Okay, very good. And we all love the bankhead, but defined, you said the bankhead is not essential. Now, some would argue that, that it is an essential part of our downtown, but how would you define, or what is the definition of essential?
Well, for the credit purposes, that's where the essential quote came from. It was actually during the financing and such that the bankhead theater was not seen as an essential city facility for credit purposes.
And essential means that, you know, for example, the city hall is essential to the operation of the city.
Correct.
The police department is essential.
Correct.
Fire departments, stations are essential.
So fundamentally, the city does not get to determine what is essential in this particular case. It is the financial markets which determine which is essential. And so there's some real clear ones that are just absolutely certain, and you named off a few: police station, fire station, city hall, Civic Center campus. The bond underwriters are pretty certain the city's going to work pretty hard to not ultimately have to turn those facilities over to the bank. Somewhere in the middle might be a golf course, if it included some other facilities with it, but generally, that one wouldn't quite make the grade either. And then cultural facilities are traditionally considered the least essential of facilities, i.e., the city would ultimately be willing to part ownership with a cultural facility, mainly because they know the bank can't actually resell either the property of the facility for a very effective return. So in other words, the bank ultimately wants to make sure that they don't ever have to condemn the property. They want to make sure the city ultimately pays its bills. So that's why they define essentially the most critical of the things that the city owns as essential facilities.
Okay, very good. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify a number of points there. Any other questions, or have we taken that to the limit? Okay, I have one speaker card, Jean King.
Hi, I am Jean King, and I'm always amazed about how many facts and figures Mark pulls out of his head with every...
It's in the staff.
Well, but it's there, and you bring it up. I'm very impressed. But anyway, I am Jean King, and I am the chairman of the Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center, LVPAC, which does run the bankhead and the Bothwell Center. And I think there has been confusion going around sometimes in the community about this, and he explained it with lots of numbers. I am just going to say it a little bit more simply, because the buyout of the loan for the bankhead theater was very complicated, and it's easy to be confused. And our message is a little bit simpler, my message tonight is a little bit simpler, and I want to say that no city funds have been used to pay for the city's ownership of the bankhead theater. And it is not expected that any city funds will be needed to do so on normal circumstances. No city funds were spent when the city, the county, LVPAC, and LVPAC's bank each made payments to redeem LVPAC's bonds in 2014. By monetizing the host community impact fees, HCIF, for the Altamont and Basco Road landfills, which the county collects, the city issued 9.38 million in certificates of participation COPs in 2014. 9.2 million of the proceeds from these COPs were used to redeem a portion of LVPAC's bonds. Approximately $150,000 in proceeds from those COPs were used to pay the city's expenses of issuing the COPs, primarily legal fees and consulting fees. So the city got their money back for those expenses. Since 2014, the HCIF revenues have been more than sufficient to pay the principal and interest on the city's COPs. As to the future, the city engaged a consultant during 2012 to project future HCIF revenues. As Mark said, the projections anticipated that the HCIF would exceed the principal and interest on the COPs. While the actual HCIF has so far been a bit less than the base case projected HCIF, this has simply reduced the amount of surplus HCIF after the principal and interest on the COPs is paid. No money from the city's general fund should be needed to pay the debt service on the COPs that the city issued. LVPAC is building a capital reserve to fund any future needed capital improvements at the bankhead theater. In addition, the city is building a capital reserve from excess HCIF funds. I am submitting a memo to the city, which has been written by LVPAC's lawyer, supporting my statements here this evening. And LVPAC's Board of Directors, along with its other volunteers, donors, and patrons, continues to be very grateful for the assistance that the city provided to LVPAC in handling a very complicated transaction. Thank you.
Thank you. And just recognizing that the city is bearing the risk for the next 20 years or whatever that we're facing here.
We are, no?
Okay. No other comments, or no other speakers? So close the speaker comment period. Questions, comments from the council? No? Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll move. We accept the staff recommendations?
I'll second.
Move by Councilmember Carling, second by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. And with that... Okay, with that, we go to committee member reports, committee reports and matters initiated. Councilmember Coomer.
I don't have anything to report on, other than I made a really nice visit to Lavta the other day to test out a new three-point fastening device in the new buses that we're going to be having. So we're going to be, you know, so I can no longer make excuses for rolling down the aisle as the bus accelerates and going out the back door, but that's just part of my life, can I say? No, we're actually meeting tomorrow in one of the committees down there, so nothing to report on from there.
Very good. Councilmember Carling?
Yes, on May 16th, I participated in the Key to the City graduation at the airport. Mr. Shore spoke of that earlier, and it was terrific fun, and not only was the current set of graduates enthusiastic, but as Mr. Shore pointed out, many of the alumni have been invited back. And I would also like to congratulate Susan and her team for a fantastic program, and I certainly hope we can keep it up. It really is a nice program. On May 18th, I, along with several of my colleagues up here, participated in the Civic Appreciation Dinner at the Robert Livermore Community Center. Again, a terrific event, recognizing all those volunteer groups that participate in making this city as terrific as it is. And I also participated, I would like to say, I also participated in the Pedrosi Foundation Ceremony just prior to this meeting tonight, and it is a fabulous group of people that help young high school and early college people with financial support. And they recognized giving out more than $400,000 to 112 deserving students. And it was just another way to make yourself proud that you're part of this community. It's an amazing group of people that raise the money, and it's an amazing group of students that have won these awards and will further their education. It's really awe-inspiring. And the last thing I wanted to talk about briefly was the last steering committee meeting. Councilmember Warner mentioned that he and I would be bringing up-to-date at these meetings so that we would have a record of the material that was presented. So on our last meeting was May 11th, and as Steve Stewart remarked earlier, the next meeting's this Thursday at 6:30. Some highlights from the meeting on the 11th was all 19 members were in attendance at that particular meeting, and we did have five residents that took advantage of the open forum at the beginning to speak on the topics that were on that agenda, so we did have some people from the community outside of the committee itself speak. A couple of other highlights was the website is up and running, and so the Placeworks, which is the facilitator, has some flyers, and for your information, the website is yourlivermore.org. And so I encourage people to take a look at that. You can find a lot of the materials on there that we've discussed, and there's a place for your own input. Some of the questions might be, do we get written inputs from people that are in the community? And the answer is yes, we do, and in fact, staff has provided each of the members of the committee with some of the material that we get sent to city staff, and we get that as part of the meeting. A couple of the agenda topics from the last meeting was an introduction to financial issues, and so we had an outside consultant, Greg Davidson of NBS. NBS is an independent firm that specializes in consulting with local governments in California in terms of their finances and how to develop projects within cities, and it was a very helpful guide. Oh, and then they also passed out, which I found particularly useful, since I'm pretty new to a lot of city business, but this guide on special financing districts and how you might accomplish that, and I encourage anybody that's interested that want to learn more about how cities finance projects such as what we're talking about, to take a look at this, because it really does... 218 is mentioned, 218 was mentioned earlier in this meeting, so they spent some time in there about 218, and some of the other legislation that governs the way that we can finance cities and in particular projects. And then the other particular topic that evening was a review of parking, traffic, and pedestrian circulation that was presented by Sheri Sheets, sorry, Sheri Sheets. It's getting late, right? Or City Engineer, which I think was also quite, it was full of information, and it was very, I think, instructive for the folks there that maybe had not participated in the previous council meeting where the discussion in particular around parking was held. So I think in that case, Ms. Sheets did a nice job in bringing people up on the committee up to speed on some of the parking issues, traffic, and pedestrian considerations. So I think somebody, I think Mr. Rounds mentioned, he thought the meetings were going very well. I do too. We have another meeting, like I said, on this Thursday at 6:30, and certainly invite any of the public that would like to participate to come on out. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Spodolski?
Sure. One thing I'd like to ask, are the topics for the meetings for the steering committee posted on the website prior to the steering committee meetings? Yes. Yes, okay, because I did receive a call earlier from a resident asking to know what the topics were prior to speaking, so I'll make sure that that person knows.
Yes, I think you can go on yourlivermore.org. Yes, I think you can go on yourlivermore.org, and you'll get that information.
Okay, perfect. It's hard to follow such a report here, but I've had several, since I missed the last council meeting, just summarizing several Lavta meetings, everything is going well. I'd like to thank Councilmember Coomer for helping with the point restriction issue that we have on, the secure on the vehicles, because we've had some patrons that are concerned about this new three-point system versus an old four-point system. So we're doing extensive testing to make sure that it's just as secure as the four-point system. Other than that, Lavta's been great, running very well. No other real committee meetings. Things seem to have been canceled for one reason or another, some strange solar flares or something that's causing it. But other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay.
No matters initiated.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, on May 11th, I attended the Local Agency Formation Commission meeting. Most of the discussions centered around the Raymond Tract and the annexations for the city of Pleasanton. On the 12th, the, attended the Livermore Pleasanton and Fire Department Joint Powers Authority meeting. We talked about budget and operations reports. Again, Key to the City, what a great, what a great program that was, and certainly kudos to our city clerk, Susan Neer, for really championing that program, and the help that Jean Bell had as well. She was helping out with the event, and so with Ellen, Ellen was there as well. Thanks. Civic appreciation, it's amazing the number of people that we have that are here committed to make this community a great place to live. On the 19th, I attended the grand opening of The Wave, the water park in Dublin. $43 million water park, it is spectacular. They have a half dozen water slides, indoor pool with a wheelchair ramp, very cool. The indoor pool, outdoor pool, and the water slides, even more things that I will never go on. But there was one that, it's a water slide where you're standing over it, and it's really just like this straight shot that goes down, and there is a trap door that opens and drops you into the water slide. Yeah, it's, it is spectacular. It's quite a, quite an achievement. So that was the opening of The Wave on the 19th. And on the 20th, Livermore High School celebrated its 125th anniversary. Livermore High was the first union high school in California, and it is still the, and now is the only one left in Alameda County that has a Future Farmers of America program. And they do this great program every year. They bring out third graders to show the third graders that milk does not come from a carton, and that wool does not come from a store. So it's, it's a great program. So one matter initiated, we had that letter, and also one of the comments about the proposed sewer change, costs to these sewer service charges for Pleasanton. We got a letter from Mayor Jerry Thorne asking us to look at that. And I would suggest that perhaps, since there may be some issues about double billing or unequal billing, of course, they could build an eight to $10 million pipeline instead, but I'd suggest perhaps staff could have a conversation with Pleasanton and see if there'd be some way to have an equitable resolution on that.
Yeah, in particular, the fact that they did avoid an eight to $10 million charge to have a new line or eastbake mud. So yeah, that would, I'm just, I'm curious to see, you know, how does that agreement work?
Well, we're going to the Pleasanton DSRSD plan instead.
Right, right. So they did realize a cost saving and just making sure that we're getting our costs back.
We stay whole.
Yeah.
Okay, very good then. Okay, with that, that's all I have. Anything else from staff here? Okay, with that, we'll adjourn this to the next meeting on July, or excuse me, on June 12th. Thank you.